Okay, good evening, everyone. It is 7:00 PM on December 9th. Welcome to the regularly scheduled Parkway School Board meeting. If you would all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll get the meeting started. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This evening, the Board of Education is recognizing Parkway's selection as a Green Ribbon School District and our National Schools of Character. It has been our Parkway tradition to take time to recognize deserving schools and individuals at our regularly scheduled board meetings. Tonight, we will be recognizing these schools virtually. I'd like to invite Patty Bedborough, Chief Operating Officer, Chief Financial Officer, to begin tonight's recognitions.
Thank you very much. This year, we're proud to announce that Parkway School District was awarded a 2020 U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon School District Sustainability Award. Parkway is the first district in the state of Missouri to receive this award and one of only 11 school districts nationwide to be recognized this year. The U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon Schools exemplify whole-school sustainability by reducing environmental impact and costs, improving the health and wellness of students and staff, and incorporating environmental and sustainability education. Green Ribbon Schools are ensuring that their students learn to live, work, and play with sustainability and health in mind, not as an afterthought, but as an integral part of everything they undertake. For nearly 30 years, Parkway School District has strived to reduce the impact on the environment in leading and innovative ways. In recent years, we've made tremendous strides in furthering these accomplishments. Tonight, I'd like to highlight just a few items. Since 2015, we have reduced our energy consumption by 25% by effectively managing our daily energy use combined with projects supported by our community with bond issues such as HVAC upgrades, advanced building controls, and LED lighting installations, while expanding our onsite solar production to 1.1 megawatts. Every year, Parkway diverts nearly half of all of its waste from going to landfills through composting and recycling programs. Improving the health and wellness of students and staff is a high priority. We strive to meet that priority by offering a multitude of employee and student wellness programs. Our award-winning Employee Wellness Program has been recognized not only by United Healthcare, but also by the Business Health Coalition. We have implemented strategies for maintaining healthy buildings and grounds, such as monitoring our indoor air quality, limiting pesticide use, and utilizing green cleaning methods. We have a fleet of 52 CNG-fueled buses, which reduces our use of diesel fuel. We have installed geothermal at our largest high school campus, South High, as an alternate energy source. We have native landscaping at 15 Parkway School locations, and it provides students learning opportunities, wildlife habitat, and helps to conserve water. Environmental education is incorporated through the outdoor school program that immerses students in hands-on learning about the impact of the environment, while sustainability learning has been added to the guaranteed curriculum for elementary students. Many schools also utilize outdoor classrooms, hiking trails, and produce gardens that supply fresh foods to cafeterias and the Parkway Food pantry. We want to take a few moments to recognize some key individuals that have helped in these efforts. First and foremost is Eric Leeters, our Director of Sustainability and Purchasing. He has led a great deal of this work. A shout out to our facility staff who have helped within the implementation of our energy-saving standards and with our new installation and construction protocols that we have. Our Director of Transportation, who is key in obtaining our grants associated with the purchase of our CNG-fueled buses. Our Director of Nutritional Services, that has been key both in our composting and our recycling programs, but also with the utilization of the fresh produce from our gardens. Our Director of Technology and his staff, who have helped to implement the energy savings controls that are on our computers. Our Curriculum Coordinators have been heroes in implementing the sustainability into our curriculum and engaging activities with our students. All of our principals and building administrators have been key in supporting our sustainability efforts and encourage student participation and leadership in their green teams and initiatives. Most of all, we want to thank the Board of Education and Dr. Marty for the continued support in this endeavor.
Thank you very much, Patty, and thanks to all of those individuals who've worked so hard to get us to where we are. Next up, please welcome Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, Dr. Greg Matheson.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. Board of Education, Ms. Dover, Dr. Marty. The National School of Character Recognition Program is run by character.org, the National Character Education Organization. Each year, schools apply to be recognized at the state level, and if chosen for that, they move on to the national level. It is a rigorous process that requires the school to outline their character education practices that align with character.org's 11 Principles of Character Education. Schools are also required to submit data and artifacts to show the effectiveness of their efforts, evaluate them across state, and score them. Prior to COVID, this application process also involved a school visit for evaluators to see character education in action. The following schools received recognition at the state and national levels. First, Highcroft Ridge Elementary. Highcroft Ridge has many established character education practices that helped them earn the National School of Character status the first time they applied. Their rose values responsibility, ownership, safety, and excellence have long been established in the culture of daily life at the school. They empower their students through service learning and daily leadership roles. The Highcroft Community Staff, Students, Parents, and Community Stakeholders considers this an honor to be the result of everyone involving, involved placing a high value of character education. In elementary, we also have Oakbrook Elementary. Character.org requires schools to get recertified every five years. Oakbrook originally achieved National School of Character status in 2015 and submitted an application for recertification in 2020. They earn this distinction in great, in great part because of their focus on their school character traits. Oakbrook teachers lead morning meeting discussions about character traits and connect them to ELA curriculum in the stories students read. Additionally, a point in pride is their Stop and Think Social Skills Program. This program teaches kids about social skills and allows the students to practice acting out those skills in real-life situations. I want to congratulate Oakbrook Elementary for their recertification tonight. We also have Ren Hollow Elementary. Ren was chosen as a National School of Character because of the way they live out their core values each day. Aside from their application to each character families, authentic service learning, connected to the curriculum, and strategically building relationships between students and adults in the building. Congratulations, Ren Hollow Elementary. Next, we have West Middle. West Middle earned State School of Character status in 2019 and showcased their growth mindset by taking the feedback from the process and applying for National School of Character status in 2020. This perseverance paid off as they achieved this goal. Highlights from their application are focused on empowering their students. Students at West Middle participate in contribution projects where they design, implement, and manage a product, project that would contribute to their community with limited guidance from the faculty. As a leader in me, school, West Middle School also hosts a family night in order to teach their parents more about the seven habits of highly effective students. Additionally, students are asked to create both academic and personal goals as part of Character Education Initiative at West Middle. Congratulations, West Middle, on your National School of Character. And finally, we have Central High School. Central High earned State School of Character status in 2019 and showed great grit and perseverance when they applied for national status in 2020. Points of pride for Central High from their application include their school-wide Day of Service, which is no small feat with a high school as big as theirs. And if you haven't been there, it is an outstanding day. And coming to consensus on their core values, and their core values are respect, integrity, and caring. These values are used and shared as reference points for all that they do. Congratulations, Central High. Again, in many districts, having one or two in a matter of four or five years is a lot. And Parkway, we have now, this year alone, five more schools of national, national schools of character. Congratulations.
Congratulations, indeed. Certificates have been mailed to all the schools. We thank you to all of our representatives for joining us virtually this evening. We're looking forward to doing special recognitions in person very soon. Next up, we have additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda. 6.01, addition to contract to Agenda Item 10.06, approval of the 2020 Stop-Loss Provider. 6.02, addendum to Agenda Item 10.04, approval of personnel items. And 6.03, removal of Agenda Item 10.15, approval of authorization for disposal of surplus property. Duplicate item, the same as 10.13. Next up, we have public comments. During this time, we provide an opportunity at each meeting for citizen comment in an effort to maintain an open and respectful dialogue with our community. The public comment session is not the appropriate forum for addressing individually identifiable student and/or personnel matters. Therefore, due to privacy laws protecting students and employees, comments about these matters should not include personally identifiable information about particular students or employees. Members of the public staff and students are encouraged to utilize established protocols and procedures for offering suggestions or addressing concerns and complaints prior to bringing the issue before the board. Please be mindful that the meetings of the board, including your statements, are broadcast and that you are responsible for any public comments you make. In lieu of a public statement, you may choose to submit your comments to the board in writing. Also, due to time constraints and the need to complete the primary responsibilities of our meeting agenda, we cannot respond during the meeting, so you will receive a response from us in writing. We are always available to have an open dialogue outside of our meetings and can be reached by email or phone using the contact information on the Parkway website. Tonight, we have six speakers. Each speaker will have three minutes to make their statement. Once your time expires, we will automatically move to the next scheduled speaker. When we are in person, we are able to provide a timer on the screen, but for these virtual meetings, you will need to keep track of your own time. When your time is concluded, your microphone will automatically be muted. At that time, please exit the meeting and rejoin the live stream available to the public. First up, we have Megan Hether. Megan?
Good evening.
Evening.
Megan Hether, I'm a Parkway parent to a first grader and a seventh grader. I'm here tonight to say thank you, first to the teachers that have been guiding and developing our kids this year. At the beginning of the year, my goal for my children was to just maintain wellness. Let's just get through this and we can make up for any losses next year. However, I have changed my mindset as the year has progressed. My kids are growing and learning, thanks to the generosity, flexibility, and most importantly, professional expertise of our Parkway teachers. They have made it work, so to speak, and have done so with a sustained energy and enthusiasm that I admire. It has to be taxing, and we owe them a debt of gratitude. Secondly, I am here to thank Dr. Marty and the board. I've often joked with my kids that 2020 is the year of picking off the menu of bad choices. But for you all, as leaders, it's actually much harder than that. For you all, 2020 is the year of navigating competing values. Safety, mental health, equity, access to specialized services, meals, learning supports, arts, athletics, and many more. All are important, all are valued, and the balance of those competing values is different for every student and every family. Individual family and student situations have come with challenges, for sure. But I feel the district has tried to give families options, perhaps even a sense of control during a very chaotic year. These are difficult decisions for everyone being made in an ever-changing public health environment. When we get to the other side of this global pandemic, may we all see the real-life lessons learned here. Grit, resilience, and perseverance certainly come to mind. The ability to flex and adapt by our district, students, teachers, and families has been commendable. So, thank you. I appreciate your willingness to serve during this difficult time and your leadership in navigating so many challenges. May 2021 be a brighter year for us all. Much appreciation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hether. Next up, we have Melinda Davis.
This is Davis. You should be able to unmute.
Hi, my name is Melinda Davis, and I was employed with Parkway for 12 years until my resignation last month. I was initially a substitute teacher, and then I have been a teaching assistant the last four years. This past August, most of the district's operations staff were offered a furlough package, since at that time Parkway was engaged in all virtual learning. The expectation was that staff taking the furlough would be called back to work on October 18th, a week before the students were expected to return to in-person learning. The furlough package presented to us did not contain all the pertinent information, which led those who took the furlough to lose a week's wages while receiving no unemployment benefit. First, it was presented that we would receive, as present, we would receive $300 a week COVID supplement in addition to our normal unemployment benefit. It was not clearly indicated that this additional supplement could run out at any time. In fact, our package included a note that this supplement could even be increased to $400. It was presented as though this money would be available for the duration of the furlough, making it a very appealing offer to the staff. Only when specifically asked was it revealed that the supplement was not guaranteed for any period of time. In fact, this additional 300 ran out after the first week of our furlough, and we never received it or any benefit the first week. Yes, the first week of unemployment benefit has never been received, has never been received, excuse me, nor expected to be paid out. This is because the first week of unemployment is considered the waiting week. This week is only paid if all unemployment benefits are exhausted, which typically takes approximately 20 weeks of unemployment. Again, our furlough was only expected to last nine weeks, so this money was never reasonably on the table. Only employees who had received unemployment benefits within the past 12 months would possibly have a chance to see this money. This was, again, not communicated by the district. The district had instructed us to contact the unemployment office for specific details regarding our personal situation, but reaching Missouri unemployment was nearly impossible. Staff had only one week to contact the office before making a decision. This time was not sufficient, as the unemployment office was only open during typical work hours and wait times to speak with the representative ranged from three to five hours. I believe the district was negligent in not communicating all pertinent details of the furlough before filing a group claim for those who decided to accept it. At the very least, I would expect the district to take ownership of their mistake and apologize to those who accepted the furlough and lost a week's worth of wages. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Davis. Next up, we have Jeffrey Walk.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Jeffrey Walk. I'm a senior at Parkway South High School. First, I wanted to thank the board for its commitment to providing as high-quality education as possible without sacrificing student and faculty health. I'm aware that it hasn't been easy to find a balance throughout, but your commitment to accepting feedback and utilizing it in decision-making is admirable. If the board is amenable, I would like to request that the 10:00 AM start, class start time be considered once again for future quarters and classes. There are two main reasons that I specifically ask this today. The first is that returning to the 55-minute class time would help improve school life balance for students. For most of the classes I personally participate in, I get out of my 90-plus-minute classes and follow it throughout the day with several additional hours of homework, oftentimes several additional hours per class. I find myself unable to do much else with any additional time I might be so fortunate to have. While I take more difficult classes than the average student, I've found similar results when I've asked some of my friends in less-risk courses as well. Additionally, the time we spend in class, although necessary and useful, often leaves extra time wasted by activities that are difficult to perform online or of a limited academic function. Overall, returning to the 55-minute class times of the first quarter, in my opinion, would help streamline in-class education and reduce the overall amount of time and stress that students spend on homework every day. More importantly, though, is the effect that the 10:00 AM class times beginning would have on student sleep and overall wellness. We've known for a long time that high schoolers, due to their shifting circadian rhythms, tend to perform better with later school start times. Some studies, studies from Oxford have recommended that, or have suggested that teenagers don't specifically get up to full brain function until between 9:00 and 10:00 AM. And as such, beginning at 8:40 has, in my opinion, limited use. I find personally that my, I'm incredibly groggy and that it's hard to concentrate in the morning. And while obviously, the 7:35 start time is what we're used to in person, it's different when there's so much less structure getting to school or preparing in the morning. When, when all you have to do is hop out of bed and hop in front of a camera, it, the amount of wake-up prep that you require to do in any situation is, is much lower. So, moving back to the 10:00 AM start time would help students prepare, would help students match their sleep schedule, and overall create healthier students. At first, I thought that I was alone in this request, but about a week ago, Parkway Connect sent out a survey with the opportunity to create custom comments that others in the Parkway community could rate. I was surprised and happy to find that out-of-the-top comments at the time I completed the survey, nearly all of them requested a return to the 50-minute class, class schedule. Although I understand that this might not necessarily be possible, I do ask that it be looked into for perhaps the third quarter if we are required to spend it again online. And I hope that the board will be able to take significant action. Thank you all once again for your time. I really appreciate all the work that you guys have done.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walk. Next up, we have Terry Zuber.
Can you hear me, Mr. Todd?
Yes.
All right, I think. Good evening, board members. My name is Terry Zuber, and I have two children who attend Parkway South High School. The board agenda states that tonight, which is here, the status of school operations and future plans for their, for the school. This status should include a fully developed strategic plan that at a minimum begins with a four-day-a-week, 100% in-person learning option for all grade levels, as well as a return to a semester schedule for high school students versus the current quarter system that is pushing content over ensuring content understanding. Additionally, this plan should take effect no later than the first day of second semester. If you are not presented with such a plan by the Parkway Superintendent, it's time for you as the board to ask why. The Dirty School Board Association states that each of you, as school board members, are guardians of the public trust, and you are ultimately responsible for the success or failure of the local public education. It states that you, as board members, serve as advocates for the educational excellence for our youth, and it is your responsibility to put those interests first. Today, the interest, or better put, the educational needs of the majority of the Parkway School District students have not been put first. Since the start of the year, you have received thousands of emails, received many petitions, and have heard both parents and students speak in this form that virtual learning is failing them. And yet, there has been no sustainable progress to meet their needs. This failure has resulted in the overwhelming loss of trust in the Parkway School District and its leaders. The district website states that the mission of the Parkway School District is to ensure all students are capable, curious, caring, and confident learners who understand and respond to the challenges of an ever-changing world. How can you instill such skills in our children, your learners, when you are not providing capable, curious, caring, or confident leadership that ensures they are given the education that you committed to providing? Why is Parkway not capable of providing adequate in-person learning opportunities when almost every surrounding district is doing so successfully? Why has it taken almost five months to express curiosity by sending out a survey to obtain feedback from parents and students when this very issue was discussed the first board meeting following the implementation of virtual learning this year? Why have the schools canceled parent-teacher conferences when they are dedicated evenings for parents and teachers to connect for the whole purpose of caring for our kids? These are unanswered questions, and they're just a few examples of how Parkway is failing to fulfill its mission. If you need more, simply take 10 minutes to read through a small portion of over 1,000 thoughts shared on both the parents and high school students' thought exchange, and that equals over 2,000 comments. The message is very clear. Virtual learning is not working for the majority. It is time to return our students who need it to the classroom. It is time for a change, and I'm asking each and every one of you to uphold your responsibility and commit to advocate for the educational excellence for our youth and to put the in-
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Zuber. Next up, we have Pat McPartland. Next up, we have Pat McPartland.
Good evening, President Todd, Vice President Hopper, board members, Dr. Marty and Mrs. Stover. I'm Pat McPartland, President of Parkway N E A, representing the educators in the Parkway School District. This evening, I want to share a little bit of information from a membership survey that we conducted in November, information that also was shared with district administration. Approximately six hundred of our members completed our survey. There is widespread agreement at all levels that there's a need for consistent, predictable, and safe approach to the teaching and learning for students, families, and staff. The continued flux of plans, while pushed by conditions of the community in response to them, has made the second quarter very fragmented and stressful for all, particularly in comparison to first quarter. Third quarter needs to be better for all students, staff, and parents. Educators of all levels expressed significant areas of concern about face-to-face learning. These are not new concerns, but again, bear repeating. There are concerns about adequate social distancing in classrooms, the cleaning and disinfection of buildings, communication about exposure to COVID, HVAC and air quality, and the expectations and responsibility for teaching students at home in the blended model. It's important to recognize that though our high school educators and middle school educators had a very brief amount of time in the blended model, there was considerable stress created by the concurrent learning model, one that did not seem to serve either the face-to-face or the students at home well. In addition, elementary teachers have shared similar feelings about students zooming in on their at-home days. This is often a number of suggestions for improvements were made, and this was shared with the district leadership as well. It's important to know that in looking at third quarter, approximately sixty percent of our elementary respondents indicated they would be most comfortable returning in a virtual fashion and about forty percent in a face-to-face of some kind. Secondary educators, approximately seventy-four percent, favored returning to a virtual start to third quarter and a twenty-three percent for a face-to-face model. Regardless of the model chosen, we continue to call for safety and continuity to be key considerations. We would continue to stress that as the district plans for the rest of the school year, it's important that the concerns of educators doing the work daily within four students are not just acknowledged but are addressed. They need to be confident that their health and safety are valued and protected by future plans. They need to know that their concerns and ideas about the how and what of teaching and learning are an actual part of the plans that they will be responsible for implementing. We will continue to press for this collaboration to happen as called for in our agreement and look forward to working with the district to make the best possible decisions for third quarter and beyond. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Jenny Speckman.
Mrs. Speckman is not here tonight.
Not here, okay. She was our last speaker, so thank you all very much for your comments. You will receive a response from the board in the next several days. So thank you for joining us tonight. Next up, may I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education as scheduled for December ninth, twenty twenty?
So, move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And you opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The next regular board meeting will take place on Wednesday, January thirteenth, twenty twenty, beginning seven PM. Board candidate filings begins on Tuesday, December fifteenth at eight AM and ends on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one at five PM. Filings will be taken by appointment except on the first and last day of filings, when filings will be taken in the order they are received in person. The terms of Matthew Schindler and Kevin Seltzer expire in April twenty twenty-one. Next up, board liaison reports.
I can start as usual, I guess. I guess we've got, I've got a few questions from the community about how we handle emails internally. I just want to kind of address some of the concerns that are out there and make sure you understand how the process works internally and the fact that any concern or suggestion that comes from the community is routed to one board member or to all of us, we all do see that concern and it's shared with everybody. And then the norm being that right now is that President Todd or Dr. Marty will reply, and that's kind of the process thing has been doing, going well. I do admire Dr. Marty and President Todd for replying to all the communication that we do receive. And I do want to point out then too, you get a reply, it will not have all the board members on it, but we all do get a forwarded email having the reply from Dr. Marty or President Todd just for the fact we need to avoid a email chain of all board members being on a conversation about Parkway business, which could constitute a meeting under the legality of meeting laws. So just want to let everybody know, we've got a lot of emails, we do see them all, we see them all come in, and then we do see all the replies that go back out. So just want to clear that up a little bit. Thank you.
I guess, per usual, I'll follow Matt and congratulate him on, I always enjoy Matt's perspective, and I'll continue his, in that vein of, I guess, a peek behind the curtain of how the school board operates. In the last several months, our school board meetings have been more attended than usual, and that's a product, I think, of the virtual platform as well as these unprecedented times. And I think a lot of people that attend our meetings, first of all, they, the headliner is always, you know, what are we doing as far as returning students to buildings? And it's generally couched as voting a yea or nay and examining a recommendation from Dr. Marty. And in that same light, the board on that issue and on most issues tends to vote seven zero, and the perception, I think, is that Dr. Marty throws out a suggestion and the seven of us approve it. And the misconception that arises from that is that somehow we're rubber-stamping things. What you don't see and what Matt's alluding to is, you know, what goes on behind the scenes, which is a flurry of, at the board level, emails, questions to administrators, questions to teachers, questions to anyone that, you know, that the board relies on for information. And by the time a recommendation comes to us, that recommendation is generally vetted through the administration, and is the result of the collaboration among teachers, faculty, administrators, even student input, community input, that has also been run through the gauntlet of the board's examination and questioning. So by the time we get to a board meeting, while it may look like, you know, there's a single recommendation from a superintendent voted upon by seven individuals, what you're seeing is the last step in a process that most, that takes place throughout the district involves many, many, many different parties. So while we're using this, you know, while we have an audience here, you know, following Matt's lead, I think it's important to give folks an idea of how these decisions are made. Obviously, we do our work in public, but a lot of what goes into our decision-making is done through those, those processes. And if anyone is viewing and has questions about how any of that works, feel free to send an email, and as Matt said, Jeff and Dr. Marty and whoever else will get you a nice answer.
I'll go ahead and step in. I was going to do kind of an overview of, of the process that I've gone through in the past couple of weeks, well, months, as long as I've been a board member when it comes to making decisions. We've brought up emails. Every mail, email that comes to the board, we read. Every response that goes out from the board, we read. We talk with parents, we talk with teachers, we talk with, we read things on social media that may not even be necessarily aimed directly at us. We keep up with local news information, we get information from the district. All of this information we take in filters into our decisions that are made be in the best interest of kids. That is the final filter that it goes through. And that's what our decision-making process is based on. And they're not simple decisions, they're complex. When you send in an email with your opinion, know that we have gotten fifty other opinions that are different from yours. Some of them are same, or a lot of, a lot of them are different. But we always take it through the lens of what's best for kids, and that's not always an easy answer. I also wanted to bring up the, some of the other things that I've done in the past month as a board member. I attended the PAMI meeting. Unfortunately, it was the first one I was able to get to this year, even though they were virtual. The parents advocating for multicultural excellence in education, it is a great group and a great resource in this district. It had really good attendance this year because, let's face it, it's easier for parents to attend things virtually. I attended a presentation with them that Dr. Wallen did on about the Parkway dashboard and about ways to keep our parents, our families healthy throughout this pandemic. And it was great. It was a really good presentation. We're also continuing with our policy review. We have, I think, finished up the J policies, and we're still working on some of the E policies. And we have a couple of different teams working on that, making sure that our policies are up to date and in order as they need to be. Thank you.
I guess I'll go. Last week, the school board attended a board workshop with our administration leadership, which we do every year, twice a year. It's a wonderful opportunity for the board and administration to come together to do a deep dive into a number of different topics. It's a rather lengthy time period, but really offers a chance for us to really dig deep into some of the issues that are, are very pertinent and relevant to what we're doing at this point in time. Monday, this past Monday evening, I also attended the Special School District Governing Council meeting. It was virtual with the twenty-two partner districts within the Special School District. At that meeting, we reviewed the budget, actually approved the budget, and like most school districts, Special School District is struggling with its budget as well, with the finances, reduced revenues, et cetera, and some of the crunches that have been put on it because of, of the COVID situation. We also reviewed the CSET plan, which is the Comprehensive School Improvement Plan, and also heard a report from the Public Review Committee, which is an overarching committee that comes to identify some key issues that need to be addressed by the Special School District. Within that Public Review Committee, I believe, the report, there were a number of different issues that are goals that are trying to be met within the Special School District, and one of which is compliance, and that is something that's very much on a lot of our interests at this point in time. So there will be considerable attention being paid to, to that throughout the next year. And I believe it's next year where the Public Review Committee is, is due to come back to do its review once again, full comprehensive review, so that will be taking place. That's all I have. Thank you.
Sam or Christie?
I just want to echo what others have said regarding the emails and communications we've received from our teachers, our parents, even students. It does mean a lot, it really does, and you know, our perception basically is we read an email, we like to respond to it immediately, but the structure doesn't provide for that. But personally, as a board member, I want to thank everyone for the time and their interests to inform us of your thinking, your feelings, your concern, your aspirations, your recommendations as well. We're very, very appreciative of that, and I know you get responses, and they are meant very sincerely to let you know that we do appreciate the communications. It's, it's our only way of really hearing from the community, so it really helps tremendously. Thank you all.
Thanks, Sam. And I'll just echo the remarks of especially Matt and Kevin and Pam. Absolutely right, you know, we're, we're all doing this because we, we want to do what's best for kids, and I know our decisions aren't always what some of you would like to hear, but we're trying to move forward. I will also add, Pam mentioned our policy work, Debbie mentioned our board workshop. I mentioned it, that at the board workshop, we talked about a variety of topics, but I really want to thank the administrators that played a role in that workshop to, to spend the time they did. And we were together about five hours on a, on a Monday night, trying to, trying to get an update and, and talk about where we're going from here in a lot of different areas, and there was a lot of work that went into those, those reports, and so we really appreciate that. Last week, I think it was last week, participated in the Communications Advisory Committee that we hold every several months or so, and we just want to thank those folks for the time that they give, volunteering their, their thoughts and their ideas about ways that Parkway can communicate more effectively and more efficiently to parents and students and staff. And so we really appreciate that. The board was also engaged with, with our, with some leaders who are helping us, helping us hone our negotiation skills, so to speak, with our nurses' union, and some folks that really give us an opportunity to, to collaborate and talk so we understand or we're able to recognize each other's needs and, and what's important. So appreciate that opportunity as well. And I don't have anything more than what everybody else had already covered. So, Dr. Marty, do you have any other things you'd like to add?
I just, just a few quick items. I want to just thank our staff for, in the month of November, during enrollment time, for benefits. We also encourage our employees to give to through four areas of support in our district, including United Ways, which is one, but our Alumni Association, Early Childhood Arts and Education. And I have to say, in this time of challenges, our employees really came through, almost equalling the, the amount of contributions from previous years. So I want to thank our many, many Parkway employees who, for their generosity and their thinking about the larger community. I, last week, since we're talking about participating in meetings, our, our, our parent advocacy group for our students with special, or parents for, with students with special needs, Matt, Laura Huff is the president of that group, one of our parents, and her and Bobby Fleming, our Director of Specials Education, Greg Matheson, I attended. We had some really good discussion and certainly heard about some of the concerns, and we were able to share some of the work that we're doing to ensure that there's quality services provided for our special education needs. And Greg Matheson will be talking about that in a little bit. We would encourage parents, as mentioned earlier, to, and parents, students, staff, to participate in our thought exchange, which is out there for a few more days. Please contribute your thoughts. And finally, I'll just share that my Subtrans Action Team, my administrative team, on Monday morning had the pleasure to have Commissioner Van Even and some staff members join us for a discussion about what's going on in Parkway. I appreciate Margie Van Even, the Commissioner of Education in Missouri, for joining us and listening to us. Dr. Beckner shared some of our work in terms of benchmark assessments and some of the work that we're doing to make sure that we are staying on track with student achievement, and we're also able to talk a little bit about plans that are going on at the state level. So I really appreciate the commissioner for joining us. We were allowed to have a voice, and I really feel that was honored, and we really appreciate, appreciate that very, very much. Thank you, Mr. Todd.
Thank you. Next up, we have no board subcommittee reports, no scheduled upcoming subcommittee meetings to report about. So next up, we will approve the consent agenda, which we have all reviewed. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the December ninth, twenty twenty board materials?
So, move.
Thank you. Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Next up, we have an action item, which is the approval of the Audit and Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. So I would like to call on Brittany Wolfram with Curver, Eck, and Brakel, and Brian Whittle, our Director of Finance, to present
Well, thank you. I'm going to hand this over to Brittany shortly. She-
Well, thank you. I'm going to hand this over to Brittany shortly. She was in our office for two weeks socially, distanced, of course, in her own little office, honoring us. It went well. We had a good opinion, but I'll let her get into the details. I always appreciate having someone come in and look at our books and give us advice. I think they were a big help with a lot of the grants we got as a result of the CARES Act because they were able to kind of share what they were seeing too. So hand it over to Brittany.
As Brian said, my name is Brittany and I was in charge on this audit. So I was responsible for overseeing the audit and keeping it moving. So I just kind of wanted to share our results of the audit with you. And so the first part of the audit is the financial statement audit. Under this audit, it's management's responsibility to prepare the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles or GAAP. And it's also their responsibility to determine that the basis of accounting is acceptable. So the government-wide financial statements are prepared in accordance with the accrual basis of accounting. And then the fund financial statements are on the modified accrual basis, which is consistent with most government financial statements. And then it's our responsibility to express an opinion on the fair presentation of those financial statements. So we provide reasonable but not absolute assurance that these financial statements are not materially misstated. As part of our audit, we are required to assess risks and then we develop and perform procedures to address those risks. So we do perform our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards and uniform guidance. And as Brian said, we did issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements and this is a clean opinion. It's the best opinion you can have. And it states that we believe the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with GAAP. So as part of the financial statement audit, we also assess internal controls over financial reporting. So we do review these internal controls over payroll, revenue expenditures, and then financial reporting. However, we don't depend on these internal controls. And in our review, we did not know any material weaknesses, meaning we didn't find any instances where internal controls should be approved and reported within the report. In addition to internal controls, we also look at compliance with laws, regulations, contracts and grants. And we did not know any noncompliance as part of our audit. So the next part of our audit is the federal awards. This is called a single audit. So under the single audit, we are required to test 40% of all federal expenditures. So to get our coverage this year, we tested the child nutrition cluster and then the adult education program. And we did also issue an unmodified opinion on the single audit, meaning again, a clean opinion. We did not find any instances where there was findings or any material misstatements. And then the last piece of our audit was state compliance. So we examine the district's compliance with specified requirements of Missouri laws and regulations. So this includes budgetary and dispersment procedures, accurate disclosure of attendance records, and accurate disclosure of transportation records. We performed this in accordance with attestation standards established by the AICPA. And again, we issued an unmodified or clean opinion on this. So a few other required communications that we need to share with you. Significant accounting policies are described in note one in the financial statements. So this states that the district reports on the accrual basis of accounting, as I discussed earlier, for government-wide and then modified accrual for fund financial statements. The significant estimates relate to net pension liability and total OPEB liability in the government-wide statements. These estimates are based on amounts actuarially determined in accordance with the parameters of applicable GASB statements. We did not know any transactions that lacked authoritative guidance or consist consensus. The financial statement disclosures are neutral, consistent and clear. We didn't have any difficulties in performing this audit. And we didn't have any disagreements with management. Again, we did not have any misstatements as a result of our audit. So we found no errors, no findings, no instances of any noncompliance. We obtained a representation letter from management on December 2nd, 2020. And this states that management believes the financial statements are complete and accurate and that all material information was disclosed to us. And then as far as we're aware, management did not consult with any other accounts. And then I just want to thank Brian and Patty and their staff. They were great while we were out there. They were very prepared for us. It's been rough this year with COVID. So having coming into an audit where we have everything we need was very nice and organized for us. So thank you again. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I would, when I saw your comment about no difficulties in completing the audit, I the first thing that came to mind was COVID and all the obstacles you might have encountered. So I'm glad to hear that things went as well as they could have.
Yes, it was great. You have a wonderful team.
We know we do.
Mr. Todd, you know, one of our real strong strategic plans or part of our strategic work in the area of certainly maintaining using user resources and is really look at our audit as every year as kind of a grading and conclusion of the work that is being done to make sure we're in total compliance. And so I just want to thank Brittany, but I also want to thank Brian and Patty and their department for their ongoing work. The community trust is vital in financial management and checks and balances. And I, we take that very, very seriously in Parkway and have for a long time. And so we, we really appreciate this opportunity to share this with the board and and to share up results with our public as well.
Do you have one question? Brittany, maybe you can comment on just given your work with other school districts as well in terms of approval authorities. And one of the things we have talked about is kind of the level at which an expenditure requires board approval as compared to, you know, that being delegated to the staff level. You have any kind of perspective or comment on our current level of where the board approves contracts or expenditures as compared to where it's done at the staff level?
So the threshold of approval, I guess, for the board is consistent with what we see with other districts. Usually it's higher dollar amounts. And I can't remember yours specifically, but the what you do do based on our testing is consistent with your policy, which is great because we want to make sure you're complying with your policy and you have multiple levels of approval with the board being that last level. So we did not know any issues there. As far as the threshold of where the board approves, that just depends on what you guys are comfortable with. I know the board is also reviewing dispersments monthly. So that's a double check also. So I don't know if that answers your question, but I would say that is consistent with most school districts and that the layers of approval is what's important.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Brittany or Brian or Patty?
Could I add just a few comments? Not only do I want to thank Brittany for her exceptional work, her and her team auditing the books, I also want to do just a shout out to Brian, Kristy Groner, Deb Nolan and the other members of the department that truly go above and beyond to prepare in advance for the auditors. As Brittany mentioned, you know, that is so key to their work as well. And I truly believe Brian and his team do an exceptional job at getting everything prepared. And then, you know, Brian with his preparation of the financial statements and then wrapping in everything that we need to with the OPEB liability with the PSRS liability, et cetera. He just does an exceptional job with that.
And while we're handing out accolades from a board perspective, occasionally, we have the occasion occasionally. We occasionally meet with other board members in other districts, be it the initial training session or at the annual conference. And a lot of districts, the board members have to be far more involved in the financial aspects of the district. And so it's very nice that our, everything is in such good order in Parkway that it frees up the board to deal with other issues like answering emails and all the other stuff that we've been talking about. But it is very nice to have such a competent and reliable accounting department and makes our jobs a whole lot easier. So we definitely appreciate that.
Okay, thank you all very much. May I have a motion in the second? The Board of Education approved the 2019-2020 audit report is presented in the December 9th, 2020 board meeting materials.
Don't move.
Nikki, which please call roll.
Ms. Davis? Ms. Hill? Mrs. Hopper? Mr. Schindler? Dr. Ciotino? Mr. Seltzer? Mr. Todd?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. We have no policy review tonight, although we will soon. Next up, we have a report on the current status of COVID and school operations and future plans. So I will call on Dr. Marty to begin that presentation.
Well, thank you, Mr. Todd and board members. And you know, it's for the last four, five, maybe even six board meetings, this has certainly been an ongoing part of our agenda to report on what we have been developing over time and that is information on COVID and its impact on our district. So we're going to hear from Dr. Wallen again tonight. We also want to review what is happening currently with school operations and kind of an overview in regards to the work with our schools and certainly what's happening with our learning efforts, our student services. So we'll be hearing from Dr. Watson, Dr. Beckner and Dr. Matheson. After their reports, then Mr. Tandy and I will put into summation what we have been working on as a leadership group and some thoughts to share with the board, some recommendations and some plans that we would like to share with you and for you to consider as we move forward, as we plan for obviously the next semester. And then Mr. Handy will also kind of share that in a larger context of our communication plan. So again, similar to what we have been doing, the last several meetings, we're going to start with Dr. Wallen. And I want to just continually say to say to our public and to the board, we're again so grateful to have Dr. Wallen's leadership in Parkway. And I think, and I've heard this directly from our health, county health department. We're very, very fortunate to have her leadership. And I think they are grateful to have her leadership here in the region. So Dr. Wallen.
Thank you. Good evening, President Todd, Vice President Hopper, members of the board. Dr. Marty, this is Stover. Tonight, I will once again be sharing COVID-19 data trends and also some of the developments guiding our current and future response to the pandemic in Parkway. Slide please. So specifically tonight, I want to share county and state COVID data. We'll look at school district COVID data and information about the modified state and CDC quarantine guidance that has come out recently and also the work that's ongoing to plan for vaccine distribution for staff and eventually for students. So here we see a very familiar graph that depicts the number of COVID-19 cases over time in Saintless County. The Saintless County Department of Public Health publishes this twice a month. And here we can vividly see the recent dramatic rise in the incidence of COVID-19 in the county as well as a slight leveling off in the past few weeks. Today's seven day average of daily new cases in the county was 636. The average daily number of new COVID-19 cases has declined somewhat after reaching an all-time high in the middle of November, but remains extremely high. There's speculation the flattening and decrease in the numbers that we see here may be a reflection of the tighter restrictions that were put in place on November 17th and also possibly a result of reporting slowdowns and deferred testing during the Thanksgiving holiday week. Virus numbers towards the end of this week and the beginning of next week will give us a better indication of the impact that Thanksgiving may have had on the transmission of COVID in our region. Hospital admissions remain at levels three times where they were two months ago. And are it, there's a near record for COVID-19 deaths and hospitalizations throughout the state with Tuesday recording the third highest number of deaths in the state of 161. As a nation, we're experiencing more than 2,000 deaths a day or 1.5 deaths every minute, which is really a sobering reality. Next slide. This is another view from our dashboard of the new cases over time in the ZIP codes that feed Parkway schools. And this mirrors the county where we've seen significant elevations in cases over the past month. On October 1st, there were 28 new cases reported with a seven-day rolling average of 42.3 cases. And yesterday, there were 159 new cases with a seven-day rolling average of 170.1. We're currently experiencing a fourfold increase in daily new cases since October. Next slide. Looking again at the county data, we see the rate of new COVID diagnoses by age group on this slide. And this is the most recent data that's available for the period, November 10th through 23rd. You may recall that I shared this information with you last month and there was an upward slope in all ages. And that appears to have leveled off in this time period. What's still very concerning, however, are the very high rates at all levels. So a quick look at the key indicators that are compiled by EdPlus for our area school districts shows the regional comparison for daily new cases, transmission and positivity rates. And you know, these are metrics that we've been following for many months. The current daily new case rate for Saintless County is 66.96 per 100,000 residents. This is a decrease from the 75.53 that I reported last month, but an increase over the previous two periods that you see here on the slide. The transmission rate is hanging steady at 1.08, which is as high or higher than every other region that is that is reported here for comparison. Just a reminder, the transmission rate is telling us that each individual who becomes infected with COVID-19 is transmitting the virus to an additional 1.08 persons. So the rates of infection are increasing and the increases, as I've mentioned many times before, are actually exponential. Finally, the positivity rate continues to be extremely elevated at 18.4%, but down from 21% last month. Recommended threshold for positivity is less than 5%, which would be an indicator that sufficient individuals were being tested to help contain the pandemic. So that is not currently the case in our region. Next slide. So here we see the data specific to school-aged children in Saintless County that the state records. And for comparison, the graph on the left is the one I shared at the last board meeting and the one on the right is from today. There appears to be a slight decrease in recent weeks, but an overall trend upward with rates being significantly higher than earlier in the summer or the school year. The Health Department also provides another graphic depiction of what's happening across age groups in the county. And here we see persistently elevated rates that appear to have echoed. It will be very interesting to see the updated data in the next week to see if these trends are persisting. I also wanted to update you with the latest data available from the state that looks at the numbers of youth that live in the Parkway School District boundaries who have tested positive for COVID-19. The blue are the numbers from October 28th through November 11th. And the red are the numbers from November 12th through November 26th. The number of cases for each of these ages had age ranges has increased over the number for the previous two-week period and the percentage of the whole increase for 15 to 19-year-olds indicating ongoing increases in youth living in our boundaries. Next slide. I continue to be really grateful for the Community Health Dashboard and the insight that it provides on the impact of the pandemic for our students and staff. Recent data is incomplete because our students were home the week of Thanksgiving and the three days after the holiday weekend. So we really only have elementary students in classrooms for just a few days since the Thanksgiving break. Also, outside of elementary, our students are learning virtually and we're not doing contact tracing for most of the students who are actually at home. Here we see the comparison in isolation and quarantine for students and staff on November 18th, the last time I was here, and then today. We expected our numbers to drop for students as our secondary students had higher rates of infection. But interestingly, and they did, but interestingly, the numbers of staff have not dropped significantly. These are just snapshots. So I want to share a few more slides for more specific detail. Here we see the new cases over time for students in Parkway and appreciate the drop that has occurred since Thanksgiving and and secondary returning to virtual. Next slide. This slide looks at new cases over time for students, which were believed to be due to an exposure at school. And we see significant decrease in these numbers. But once again, we have had very few days of school and our secondary students are not in person. and our secondary students are not in person. Overall, total, in total, there have been 26 positive cases in students that were linked to an exposure at school. Next slide. This is the view of new cases over time for staff. And here we do appreciate the drop in cases that we've seen. I'm sorry, we do, we do not appreciate the drop in cases that we've seen with, as we, with students. It's important to note that the incidence of COVID in adults is higher than in children, and we are not, we are contact tracing all of our staff. Next slide. And here are the quarantine and positive cases in staff that are a result of an exposure at work. The number currently, it's currently 23 total, and we've, since we started tracking this data in September. Next slide. This is another way to look at student isolation over time, and it appears that the return of secondary students to virtual has contributed to the decrease that we see here. Next slide. And here is student quarantine over time with a similar decrease as we've seen in the isolation data. Next slide. Staff isolation over time, although it's variable. When looking at this graph, the number of positive staff members has remained relatively flat over the past five weeks when looking at averages over time. And here is staff quarantine over time, which is similar. I want to just go to next slide, please. I want to just switch gears for a moment and share some changes and recommendations that have happened in the past few weeks. Governor Parsons recently issued guidance that allowed for individuals who are close contacts in a school but wearing masks to not have to quarantine. Under the updated guidance, proper mask wearing may now prevent individuals from being identified as close contacts in K-12 schools that have implemented a mask mandate. This means that if both individuals at school, the person diagnosed with COVID-19 and the person exposed to the positive case have masks on and are wearing them correctly, the individual exposed need not be required to quarantine. It's important to note that this revised guidance does not align with CDC guidance, and the Saint Louis County Department of Public Health does not support the guidance, and Parkway continues to follow our own Health Department's guidance in this matter. The CDC also issued some revised guidance recently, and this honestly has confused some people. It's important to note that in the guidance, the CDC continues to recommend a 14 day quarantine as a standard after close contact. It does provide for options for reduction in length of quarantine for seven or 10 days under certain criteria and defers to local public health authorities for decisions about quarantine. Once again, the Saint Louis County Department of Public Health is maintaining the recommended 14 day quarantine at this time due to the level of community spread in our, in our county. And therefore, we're abiding by their guidance here in Parkway. Next slide. So in the midst of all the concern over elevated rates of infection in our community, state and nation, there's hope on the horizon. I'm happy to report the state will be begin getting COVID-19 vaccines in the very near future, and there is a state plan to provide vaccine for school staff beginning in February or March. Our school nurses have developed a district plan to be able to conduct immunization of staff, and we really hope that we will have the opportunity to do this for our, for our community. We have alerted the Health Department and signed an agreement to be something called a closed pod. We still need to wait to see how distribution vaccine unrolls, the distribution of vaccine unrolls, but we are hopeful that the 34 nurses in our district can be part of the solution for the very important task of immunizing our staff. Eventually, we would also like to develop a plan for student vaccination when the vaccine becomes available for youth. Hi. So it's nice to conclude on that note of hope. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to share the reality that COVID-19 numbers are still very high, that medical resources are becoming overwhelmed and hospitalizations and deaths have increased. That said, there appears to be a flattening of the curve in the current wave, and isolation and quarantine of students and staff have decreased since Thanksgiving and the return of secondary students to virtual learning. Saint Louis County continues to recommend a 14 day quarantine for close contacts, and we plan to continue to follow their guidance when it comes to pandemic response. These are very uncertain times, and the public health situation remains fluid and honestly unpredictable. I'm so happy, though, to end on the hopeful note that a vaccine is on the horizon. I'm grateful for your careful consideration of the data that informs decisions and our future planning. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Wallen, and it probably would be fair to, because Dr. Wallen submitted a lot of information for you rather than to have you wait. If board members, if you have some questions at this time, so we don't, we wouldn't forget there as we get into some other information. So Doc, Jeff, Mr. Todd, maybe perhaps you want to just enter a little Q and A with Dr. Wallen at this time before we move on?
Yeah, I don't personally have any questions for her, but if anybody else does, feel free to jump right in.
I'll go ahead. Thank you very much for the presentation. Always informative. Based on what you presented and what you're reading and seeing, what can you tell us about the reality of the spread in schools in general, and I guess Parkway in particular, among students and teachers? What do you take out of the numbers?
So as far as the communicableness of the virus at school, the numbers are low. So I, I think the number was 23 staff members and 26 students have been exposed at school and subsequently developed COVID-19. So it's not zero, but compared to the overall numbers, the numbers are actually low. What we're seeing, though, is COVID being acquired in the community and then being brought to schools, whether it's a staff member or a student who then subsequently exposes their classmates or their coworkers, and there's the required quarantine. So we're, that is a much bigger impact than actually the passing of COVID at school. It's, it's not zero, but it's low.
And I guess following up on that, I guess in between the lines, it sounds like you're suggesting that having students in schools is not necessarily any less safe than the alternative. Does that, and now, and I don't want to put words without you, but also, does it make a difference at what level of school, in your opinion?
Definitely, it makes, so the first part of the question, I can't really answer that. I don't have the, you know, the data on the tip of my tongue about the, the spread in the community when school's not in session. So I don't know that, but the, but we have seen that the older students have higher levels of infection, higher levels of quarantine. I shared that with you last time, and then their numbers, just their aggregate numbers are higher. So it is, it is a bigger problem, the older, for older students compared to.
And I don't want to assume anything. When you say the older, would that mean that it's a more risky venture for the staff as well? And those are.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, the, you know, the risk of acquiring COVID from a student is very low. And the, most of the staff, not all, I mean, we've had a few staff members who appear to have been exposed by a student and then subsequently developed COVID. But the vast majority of exposures at school for staff members are between staff members. So it's actually the behavior of adults to adults as opposed to adults to students. So it doesn't appear that staff members are acquiring COVID from students at high rates at all.
Thank you.
Then when students are getting it at school, do we believe it's student to student? So kind of going the other direction?
There have, there's been evidence of one or two staff to student. So I mean, the, the, the science would say that it's more likely for an adult to pass COVID on to a child than a child to pass it on to an adult. So we do, we do believe there may have been one or two cases where it was the adult that was positive, and then subsequently a student became positive, but but once again, the majority would be student to student, and the majority are in high school and athletics. So, yeah.
And then I know contact tracing gets more and more difficult as time goes on, but do we have a sense where there have been transitions in transmissions in school that all safety protocols were being followed in those situations?
Um.
Again, that's self-reporting, so that's tough.
Right, right. I, you know, for staff to staff transmission, the, the vast majority of the time, there was a breach in a safety protocol. So somebody spent more than 15 minutes within six feet of the person, or they sat down and ate together without a mask. So the staff to staff transmission appears to be more related to breaches in the protocols. I, you know, in the classroom, I think we've had, we've had a few situations where educators were working very closely with the students. So once again, not within six feet. In some of those situations, it could not be avoided because the student required that kind of intimate care. But, but for the most part, when people are maintaining the social distance and the entire room is wearing a mask, there have not been transmissions in those environments. Thank you.
Robin, is there anything additional you would suggest we, that we, if we were, if we were to bring back students at any or all levels, is there anything additional that we're not doing that you think we should be doing?
I mean, I guess my biggest concern would be that bringing back all students at all levels would decrease the possibility for social distancing. So we would just be losing a mitigation. We potentially could lose that mitigation factor, but once again, it's a layering, and we have many mitigation strategies in place, including the universal mask wearing and, you know, incredible hand hygiene opportunities. And so social distancing is just one of them. And I guess that would be the biggest concern would be putting, putting students or staff in a situation where social distancing was not possible.
Okay, Mr. Todd, as long as, I think there's a little bit of a pause, so we can always come back to Dr. Wallen, but we'll move to, to Dr. Watson first here to give kind of an overview of what's happening. She works, of course, very closely with our principals and school operations. So, Dr. Watson.
Thank you, thank you. We could go, thank you. Okay. So the 2021 school year, right? We began on August 24th, and we have certainly endured a lot in our greater community and our school community during this time. Just as review, during the summer, we developed and shared two learning options for our students in Parkway. As you can see, in option one, we have Plan A, B, and C. And so thus far, we've experienced two of these plans, Plan B and C. And previously, we had planned for Plan A, full time schedule, but we revisited this decision and we made a revision due to the community spread. Currently, our in-person elementary students are in the blended model. And our blended model has provided some positive outcomes, as well as some outcomes that are not as positive. The model has allowed us to teach the new systems and protocols to our students in smaller groupings, which has enhanced student safety and has allowed us to social distance. Now, all of our students know how to go to school, if you will, in a global pandemic. As we've previously said, our, and we will continue to say, our teachers are doing an amazing job. With that being said, this blended model that we are currently in for elementary is the most difficult plan to implement from the teaching and learning perspective. Our kids are only in school twice a week, and they are learning online twice a week without a teacher, and we have our distance learning day. Clearly, this isn't ideal because we all know that our kids need to be in school all of the time, especially our little ones in our elementary schools. But let me tell you, our teachers are working very hard and they are giving it their all. Our secondary students are learning virtually, distance learning, and this has been the method of learning for the majority of the school year for our secondary students. And again, our teachers continue to learn and do more for our students in this virtual space. Option two, of course, is our virtual campus, and the families who have selected this option have been in virtual campus since second quarter. And clearly, this has been our most stable option for students second quarter. Another reality is that our virtual, virtual campus is full. We are at capacity. We staffed virtual campus based on the preferences of families prior to second quarter. We have received countless requests to shift students to virtual campus. The current reality is that adding students to virtual campus would mean moving teachers from in-person learning to virtual campus and then redistributing students in that teacher's classroom or from that teacher's classroom. And this simply is not an option at this time. And this is our current reality, and we know that some of our parents and our teachers have been struggling with this. And Dr. Beckner is going to share some additional information about virtual campus momentarily. Another aspect, if we can go to the next slide, of our current reality are our data trends and the impact. We have been, and we continue to monitor data trends, as you all know, and the virus and its potential on our ability to deliver a quality teaching and learning experience. Our in-person learning plan reflects this. And as I referenced earlier, based on the data trends, we revisited a previous decision regarding option one A and made a revision to that plan. As we continue to look at our data trends, we also look at the data trends of other districts, as we know many of you all do as well. We intentionally do this. We intentionally do this to learn from others and ask questions as we think about enhancing the work and student opportunities in Parkway. As we think about our schools, our leaders planned diligently for staff and students to return to our school buildings. The list of items they had to attend to was long, but they took their task seriously because they wanted to provide the best environment for teaching and learning. And then our teachers returned, and their list was long as well. Their desire to engage students in learning and maintain a healthy and safe atmosphere was paramount. And one key aspect, and, and Dr. Wallen was just talking about it, one key aspect of that planning was focusing on our mitigation protocols. This has been a huge undertaking, but I must say that our leaders, our teachers and other school staff have done a stellar job. They have implemented the protocols. They have taught students how to operate under this new structure with new routines. And overall, our students have been incredibly compliant. I don't know if this aspect of schooling could have gone any better than it has. The community spread of COVID-19 is another current reality, as Dr. Wallen just talked about, and we all pay attention to the numbers. Our community spread is intense. It's probably worse than any of us could have ever imagined. But with this being the case, we just talked about, and in more depth, the data regarding the location of transmission. Our current reality is that the majority of our positive cases, as we just talked about, are not being traced back to schools. Yes, there's transmission at our buildings, absolutely, but compared to what is occurring outside of school, our school buildings have, have done a phenomenal job. This data is very telling. And so what does it tell us? It tells us, as we go back to those mitigation protocols, it tells us that our efforts, they really are making a difference. This tells us that what our teachers, our leaders and other staff members are doing is working pretty well. The intentionality, the attention to detail, the opportunity to teach our students using this blended model has been beneficial. And you know, if only the greater community, community could do what we're doing in schools, well, that would certainly change the course of many things in our community. And yes, we've talked about all of the students that have been quarantined and the staff members that have been quarantined, and this is going to happen, especially if our greater community COVID numbers continue to reflect the numbers we've been seeing. And the way to limit the majority of quarantining, as we all know, is for each and every one of us to do our part. Again, thanks to our school employees for all that they have done and continue to do because what is occurring in our schools does not mirror what is occurring in our community. Thank goodness, in regards to the, the transmission of COVID. And there are many aspects of our current reality in the, in the realm of teaching and learning. Our coordinators continue working with our teachers as we make the needed adjustments to our curriculums. In addition, the development that has been provided by this team and. And teacher leaders across the district has been absolutely phenomenal. This work is ongoing to support teachers and to best meet student needs. And Dr. Beckner will also talk uh about some additional areas of the teaching and learning uh this evening. In our student services department, that group continues to support our teachers and students. As we address social emotional needs, food insecurity, students with disabilities and more. And Dr. Matheson will also share some additional work that they are doing in student services. Well, we all know that Parkway students. They are the reason that we are here, our students. And we've said this before about our kiddos, and we'll say it again, we want our students in school. In the midst of this global pandemic, we continue to keep our students and staff as safe as possible. While we meet the needs of our learners. And I think the data that we just talked about today and the questions that were asked of Dr. Wallen. Do show that we are doing a, a good job within the walls of our schools. Our teachers and our leaders, they have been innovative, creative, they've been flexible, they've been empathetic and caring. Even patient, all while, while learning these new protocols and new systems and programs and more. And why? Because they are here for our kids. Their efforts can be seen in every aspects, aspect of the points that I, that I just covered. Our teachers have revisited lessons, they have revised them more times than any of us could probably ever imagine. Due to the current circumstances, but that's what they do. They do it for their students because they're dedicated professionals and our teachers want the best for Parkway students. So you might ask, can we do more? Absolutely, we can do more. We can always do more. But based on where we are today, because of our current circumstances. I'm confident that everyone is doing their very best. So you probably heard the word revisit and revise, and we have been revisiting and revising plans and decisions. Based on things that occur across our district. And if we didn't do this on an ongoing basis, we would not be doing what's best for our school community. This aspect of our school culture is especially important these days. As we experience this global pandemic, we will continue to revisit what we're doing. We will make necessary revisions as we want to continue focusing on the health and safety of students and staff. And high-quality teaching and learning opportunities for our students. So I will say it is our hope. That our learning from first quarter and second quarter positively impact. Our plans for a smooth second semester. These are just a few light highlights of our current reality. There are many more aspects of our current reality. But just wanted to share a couple of the key points with you this evening. And at this point, I am going to pass it on to Dr. Beckner.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Watson. I appreciate it and appreciate the opportunity to share some more information, both about. Learning in Parkway and how learning has taken place during the pandemic, as well as some information. That we've recently been able to garner about virtual campus and this information hopefully will. Um, just give us some insights into potentially future planning. So first thing to know is. We have over five thousand students, fifty-two ninety-seven. That's a, uh, that incorporates about thirty percent of our student population, slightly more, so it is not an insignificant number of students. And we did have the opportunity recently to conduct a survey to see how is virtual campus going and ask parents some questions about. Their preferences and what are, and what are things that are important to them, and I want to share some of that information and with you tonight. So first, this is a um map of our district. It's a hex map with each little hex representing a school in our district. And uh, the darker colors indicate more students choosing virtual campus and choosing a virtual learning experience. So what this shows us is. Uh, we do not have uniformity across the district in terms of the number of families who are choosing a virtual. Um, education for their children during the pandemic. And generally speaking, you can see that the higher numbers are in the north and central area of the district, and then as you go. Um, south in the district, the percentage of families in each school who have chosen virtual campus. Um, decline, and though even at our lowest school, yeah, which is Claymont Elementary, sixteen percent of our families. There have chosen virtual campus. So certainly, it's a, it's, it is a part of our reality right now and will continue to be um in the future. Um, so let's learn a little bit more about what our family said. So first, just who participated, um, we did the survey from right before Thanksgiving until December sixth. And we had a very healthy response. We ended with over eleven hundred parents responding to the survey. Um, almost six hundred students, and we surveyed students in grade six through twelve. And then we had over four hundred teachers also participate in the survey, and these were people who. Either are teaching in virtual campus, are students in virtual campus, or are parents who chose a virtual option for their students. So that's where the group that we're looking at. So the first type of question we asked um was about how is the balance between live instruction, independent work. Going because we know that um kids need both, and so we asked how balanced are those? So. Uh, eight, over eighty percent of our families said that our teachers are striking a really good balance between live instruction with teachers. And then um independent work time, and with only twelve percent saying too much independent time, it's seven percent saying. Um, too much teacher time, so positive numbers supporting the work that our teachers are doing. We then also asked a series of questions about what's important to them, and this graph will just show generally what the trends were. Uh, and so it goes from extremely important all the way down, not important at all, and most questions came back looking kind of like this, like. Everything's really important, which is good to know. Unfortunately, when everything's important, it becomes difficult to prioritize. So there were a couple of questions that really stick out and that I want to share. So the first one. Um, that doesn't match that trend is how important is live instruction? So we know this was one uh that in the spring, when we had a lot of asynchronous learning happening. And our parents said, we want live instruction. So sure enough, here we see um. Over almost ninety percent of our parents surveyed said having a live teacher either extremely important or very important. And so that uh continues that trend that we've seen. Our parents who choose virtual. Want to see a teacher and want to see that live instruction and value the work that our teachers are doing. So that reinforces that as a priority for us moving forward is having a live, uh, live instructor for our students. Um, certainly all the time, but definitely when they are learning virtual, virtually. I know many of us also received emails saying, can we please have a shorter day? We heard one of our high school students talk about that today, so we asked that question directly of our parents. And the results were, they said, actually, this is not very important to us. Uh, we followed this up with another question that said, if we shorten the day and it meant that you couldn't have a live teacher. How would that impact your likelihood to enroll? And almost two-thirds of parents said it would make us less likely to enroll. Now, so generally, having a shorter school day is not a priority for most of our families who've chosen virtual campus. Um, and this again speaks to, there seems to be value in the work that our teachers are doing, that they want that live teacher and they want them. You know, for the amount of time that they have. Closing that survey portion of, this is uh really kind of the capstone. We said, based on your experience so far in virtual campus, would you consider re-enrolling? In Parkway Virtual Campus and our, we asked, no, yes, or yes with changes. And um only fifteen percent of our families said, no, we're not, we would not re-enroll based on our experience in virtual campus. And with about a course, saying yes with some changes, uh, but the, certainly the majority saying, yes. And this is again a testament to the work that our teachers are doing. Um, because they're providing a quality experience virtually for students, so that is certainly encouraging and a testament. And to all the effort that our teachers are, not just teachers, but our teacher, students and their families are putting into making. Virtual campus a good experience for, for students. Um, next, I want to transition and start talking about some academic information. So if that's all perceptual information, want to share a little bit more. Because we do continue to monitor our students' progress and how they're doing while we've been learning primarily virtually. I've shared this information in previous board meetings. Um, where we do have this year about ninety-four percent of student grades in high school are passing grades. That is down slightly from previous years when we were at about ninety-six and a half percent of our, of our grades were passing grades. At the high school level. Um, interesting note on here, we noticed that that shift um to the increased number of failing grades that students have earned. Um, we send them coming from the number of Cs and Bs are actually down. Now, while the number of As and even Hs is actually up. And so a trend is emerging, not just in this data, but in other pieces of information we're looking at that students. Who were previously doing well prior to the pandemic, on average and in large numbers are continuing to do well. Students help whoever who are struggling uh or on the verge of struggling. Those struggles have been exacerbated by the pandemic. Um, and in some ways, not being in school is a real challenge for some of those students, and this data speaks to that. Um, this next piece of information um is how many students have no failing grades comparing last year to this year. And you'll notice that this percentage is really, really close. We haven't seen a lot of students, new students earning failing grades. What this also tells us is that with that increased number of failing grades. It is largely the same students who already had a failing grade, who now might have an additional failing grade. So again, that story emerging of, um, well, the number suggests that. The large majority of our students um continue to learn and continue to be, find success. There are some students who are, are struggling and are continuing to struggle and even seeing some of those difficulties and challenges. Challenges increase and during the pandemic. We also continue with our benchmark assessments. Um, benchmark assessments in ELA are given four times a year. We also give them in math four times a year. So I'll go by grade level, just to give you a sense comparison between the first benchmark from last year and the first benchmark from this year. Uh, we start in second grade and second grade, we've actually seen an increase in our benchmark score. We're testing about the same number of students, so we continue to test our students even when they're learning virtually. In third grade, uh, we actually see our biggest drop of any grade level, I'm going from about seventy-two percent down to fifty-seven percent. And in fourth grade, now we see very, um, a very slight decline. In our student scores in fourth grade and in fifth grade, we see the same. And then this data is consistent with actually what um many school districts across the country are seeing, which is somewhere between a three and five percent. Decline in student scores overall, though while um we certainly, if. If a year ago, somebody had told us, your schools will be closed down, you will not be in person, you know, you'll be in the middle of a pandemic, teachers will be learning to teach virtually. We probably would have predicted um a real, real decline in our student performance. And we're not seeing that overall, but we know that um again, some students continue to succeed and continue to do well. While others are struggling through. Um, in math, we're actually going to look at our unit scores because we moved the end of year benchmark from last year to the beginning of this year. So that teachers could identify student gaps at the beginning of the school year, things that might have emerged. From our emergency closure in the spring and our shift to e-learning back in the spring. And so we'll run through kindergarten all the way up through fifth grade. Uh, kindergarten, we actually see again a slight increase. Now, decrease in first, close scores in second, and we see kind of similar patterns emerge on the next slide in. Um, third, fourth, and fifth grade. Sorry, Nikki, I apparently didn't do my animations correctly, but they're very close. They're down about two to five percent. And in terms of our student scores. So overall takeaways, um, one, our students continue to learn. They continue to learn to read, to write, to do math, to gain the fundamental learnings that they need to do. In order to make this happen, we've had to do a number of things, including compacting our curriculum to ensure that students at all grade levels. And all content areas are able to achieve the key outcomes of the Parkway curriculum. Our teachers have had to make those adjustments to focus on those key outcomes. Our teachers continue to do an outstanding job, ensuring that our students are learning and we continue to monitor our students' learning. We're seeing slight declines in our scores, but large segments of our population continue to perform and perform at a high level. And but we do see that students who struggle continue to struggle. And um, I would note every time we talk about data, which we do frequently, I remind people that. Test scores do not tell the whole story, that we know that there are only so many things that formalized tests can measure. And there are a lot of things in our mission, in our vision, and just in what we know about our kids that we care about. That these kinds of measures can't show. Things like how are kids doing socially and emotionally? Are they becoming more creative? Are they becoming more curious? And those are things that are difficult to measure over Zoom and difficult to measure through a test score. Uh, but at least our data uh that we are monitoring on an ongoing basis is suggesting. That our, our students do continue to learn, but that we will certainly. Continue to have work to do with some of our students who have been struggling through the pandemic. Uh, so with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Matheson to talk a little bit about um the student services area.
Can I, can I uh interject there and can we uh, I, I think some of us may have some questions for. Either you or Dr. Watson uh before Dr. Matheson gets going, is that okay?
Certainly.
Okay, um, well, I, I do have a couple of questions specifically for you, Dr. Beckner. In your slide, um, that for, provided the data about desire for a live teacher for our virtual students. Have we, I, I can't recall, but have we surveyed our, our virtual families? And asked if. Asked if they, I, I obviously, I'm going to assume uh that they would prefer a Parkway teacher or a teacher from their home building. Um, have we entertained the idea of, of doing what some of the surrounding districts are doing? Um, providing virtual instruction by teachers outside of their district? And is that, is that an option to allow for increased enrollment in virtual academy for the second semester?
So to clarify your question, just to make sure I understand, Mr. Todd, um, so you're saying, for example. Utilizing a non-Parkway teacher, say from a third-party provider to provide that virtual learning for students?
Correct.
So we, um, certainly we do have that in Parkway. It happens infrequently just because of the breadth of our offerings in Parkway. That we do have virtual classes. Um, in this survey in particular, um, the presumption was that it would be provided by a Parkway teacher. Now, we have used um what's called the Missouri Course Access Program or MOCAP and as. Uh, providers for certain classes that we can't offer. And we have intentionally tried to provide Parkway teachers for those classes for a few reasons. One. Uh, it becomes cost prohibitive to both have our teachers and pay for in other districts or another provider's teachers. Two, we really believe in our curriculum. Three, we really believe in our teachers, and we believe that we have high-quality teachers. Um, and they're the best people to deliver the teaching and learning to our students. Uh, but it is an option that we will continue to have available, that we will utilize, that we have utilized, but we did not specifically ask. Um, if we did not provide a Parkway teacher, would you enroll? That just wasn't in the, the scope of our question.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question is, um, in, in looking at your scores, I, I like to look at the positive of everything. So I'm happy that the scores aren't lower, um, that the drop is not more significant. Um, but i- is there, do we have any, any type of formal plan for recovery between now and the end of the semester? At the end of the school year, is that, is that an option? Is there, are there things that are being discussed as to how we could get those numbers back to? Where at least we would be breaking even, so to speak, we, we'd end the year the same uh level that we would start.
So there are a couple of pieces. Um, one, we know that the most important conversations happen at the building level and about individual students. And what they might be missing and how they might be struggling. So each of our schools does have a problem-solving process. And typically a data team at their school that looks specifically at which students are struggling, what do they need to do for those particular students? Because we know that the challenges um for one student might not be identical to the challenges for another. So two students with the same score have, might, might have very different reasons for why they have that score. Um, another piece that I didn't mention previously, um, is that we did have to make some adjustments uh to some of our. To some of our assessment items, because as you can imagine, if they have to be delivered virtually, they might need to look a little bit different. So once we have our students back, we'll need to figure out was there what we would call a test effect or a mode effect. And in those that we have to problem solve. And we're also looking at. Expanding our intervention programs in our summer school. And so that we can expand that, even though we're we are discussing handing our enrichment programs off to Parkway Rockwood Community Ed. And part part of that would be to focus our attention on students who need remediation remediation or intervention. And then we'll also continue to really monitor our curriculum. We know that time is one of our challenges. And we know that Dr. Marty mentioned earlier, he's been engaged with the commissioner on map testing. We know that that. Part of that is that takes, you know, several weeks out of our school year. And we'd love for our teachers to sort of spend that time really focus on our students and teaching and learning to try to close some of those gaps. So from the curricular side, we'll continue to look at making sure that we're focused on key outcomes, that we have the highest leverage units for all of our students. So that we can close some of those gaps. But the most important conversations are going to be the ones that we have a process in each building. To try to identify what are the gaps that each individual student has and then working with the teachers to identify a plan to close those gaps. And at the building level.
Okay, thank you.
Follow up on that, Dr. Beckner, do we have a sense of how kids at other districts? Are doing? So I know a lot of people cite that other districts are in person. Five days a week, but what we're also hearing is there's a lot more quarantining and a lot of kind of unexpected absences of kids. Do we have a sense of what we're seeing in terms of our students' achievement or? Not compares?
We do have frequent conversations with our colleagues in other districts. And I know myself and Carter Snore, our assessment coordinator, are meeting frequently with our counterparts in other districts. Unfortunately, there aren't common measures between districts. Basically, we use our benchmark assessment. Somebody else might use NWEA, somebody else might use I like, there's so many different assessment platforms out there. That it doesn't necessarily create. You know, comparability between districts at the local assessment level. And but what I can share just through those conversations with colleagues is most people are seeing that slight decline in student scores. Some districts are seeing it more significantly, particularly when they're getting less engagement from their students at home. The school districts that have high levels of students not engaging virtually, obviously are seeing more significant gaps in their learning. But in terms of comparison between districts, we do not have a clean comparison.
Makes sense.
Kevin, just one question about the virtual campus and I commend everybody who's pulled that together so fast. And I think it's pretty impressive, the number of families that do want to continue. And would re-enroll in the program. That's pretty impressive. But just for a clarification point, looking in the future, virtual campus is not going away. We're going to have some version of it into the two thousand twenty one, twenty two year, correct?
Yes, we've been in these conversations now for several weeks because. Those of you who have had middle or high school students go through know that the registration process typically takes place in January and February. Which means though August might seem far away, we are in the middle of that planning now. So certainly it does look like even with being on the verge of a vaccine. You know, becoming widely available. We can't say that in August, we won't have a lot of families that will still want to continue virtually. While we have emphasized really that there are students struggling. We also know that there are students who are thriving. And they might want to continue a virtual experience and we want to continue to provide that option for them. And exactly how that will look, that's what we're trying to determine right now. And this survey information is going to help us figure that out. Now, but I think it's fair to say that at least in the medium term, virtual campus will continue to be part of our reality.
Anyone else have any questions for Dr. Beckner or Dr. Watson?
I have a couple of questions, but I'd I'd rather get through the rest of the presentation in case the questions are answered. Okay, okay.
All right, we'll move on to Dr. Matheson.
All right, good evening. Tonight I'm going to talk about our mental health and social emotional supports, our current realities, future needs. Then after that, I'm going to talk about our current plans and future plans for our students with special needs. And about the mental health, social emotional supports, we know that our school counselors, district counselors, social workers, social emotional behaviorists and care coordinators. And I'm sure I'm missing other groups of people that are pouring into our teachers, pouring into our students as well as administrators. Have been hard at work to meet the needs of our kids, whether they're in person, virtual or blended. They're meeting with kids regularly, they're supporting families as needed. We are still utilizing outside groups and organizations for therapeutic supports. And those are mainly being conducted in the virtual space. That's typically through the Child Services Fund. And MOUs that we have with outside groups for our most at risk families and people with significant needs for mental health supports. We also have several members of our team that are conducting socially distanced home visits as needed in order to support our kids and families. Every school has conducted a needs assessment at the beginning of the school year. And a follow up assessment over the past several weeks. In fact, some of those assessments are still going out this week and some early next week. This assessment tool is to help us determine the level of connection and potential social emotional supports of students or families that are needs. For instance, right now, one local school has sixty, over sixty students who have responded that they need. Or asking for mental health and social emotional supports. That was as of this week. That's a pretty high number. So what do we do with that? Our counselors and our teams contact and work through and talk to those families and connect with them. Whatever it is that they are needing, whether that is someone to talk to, therapy. Some help from the food pantry, technology needs and those things. So our our levels of supports needed from our students seem to be fairly high through this needs assessment at this time. So our counseling teams then follow up, like I said, with our families and students individually. Our teams are working on problem solving, attendance, engagement. Some social needs that students may have. Students who are struggling with anxiety, depression, students who are struggling with even getting online to do their work. Whether it's in the virtual space blended or in the virtual space at our secondary levels. So what are our future needs? Well, we know this, the fact the past nine months have been difficult for our students, both academically and mentally. While our team is doing everything it can, and that team is very robust, high level experts, student centered. It's difficult to meet all those needs in a virtual space. Some students and families have difficulty returning emails, phone calls, text messages. And thus that creates a gap at how we can support them. In fact, last week, we had a principal go with another person to go and check on nearly twenty families. To see how their kids were doing to ensure that we have eyes on those students to help out. And that was at an elementary school. So when students are in person, we know that it is easier to check on them and their wellbeing as well as address their needs in a more timely fashion. My team will continue to focus on our kids and our families as we work through this pandemic. There's a lot of behind the scenes work that is going on and the supports. And I want to thank our teachers. And our administrators, our counselors and and everyone on that list. For bending over backwards, finding different ways to to problem solve, to help engage our families and our kids. For our next slide, talking about students with special needs. I'm going to talk about our current realities with elementary school, middle school and high school. Again, like I said earlier, over the past nine months, we also have seen. Students with the most significant special needs have missed many of the supports and services that they need to thrive. A plan has been developed and is is starting to be implemented. With the input of special ed education administrators, principals, district leaders. To have a tiered approach for supports and services for students that are in person. Families of elementary students who have met those requirements, as we discussed several weeks ago. The and those additional supports have been notified and I'm happy to say. At the start of this week, we were able to bring back over two hundred elementary students, four days a week. That had significant needs with their IPs and that's programmatic needs, therapeutic needs, deaf heart of hearing. As well as students who receive eighty percent or more of their instruction in the special education setting. Special shout out to our special educators for making that happen, as well as our general educators for warmly welcoming those students into the classroom. Now, as we look at secondary schools, at this time, we plan to return our students with this most with the most needs at the secondary level. To in-person learning supports as soon as possible. Our target date would be January nineteenth, the start of second semester. And we're talking about students with the highest level needs. A highest level of special needs via their IP with a similar process. That we use with our elementary students. The first phase would be for those, again, with programmatic needs related services or those that have deaf heart of hearing program need special needs. Our hope is to increase those numbers of students at all levels as we continue throughout the semesters as we go into phase two and phase three. And that is if we are assuming that we had to continue in a virtual space. So as we know, our current reality is our teachers, our special educators, our paraprofessionals, our administrators are working extremely hard. For those students with special needs, but we also know that that does not replace the in-person learning that occurs in this. The very special. Supports that can be given only in person. The virtual space is a space in which we have worked extremely hard to meet their needs. But to be honest, we are not meeting all the needs of our students due to the virtual space, especially students with special needs. So do I have any questions or do we want to roll on to the next slide?
Next slide is fine.
Okay. So before we go to Mr. Tandy here. I just want to provide the board with. A summary. And as our team and you've heard. From Robin, then of course to our three. Chelsea, Dr. Watson, Dr. Beckner, Dr. Matheson all express the current reality, but also along the way you heard them express the fact that. In in many ways. In-person learning is is what we desire. And we really believe that as we've. Committed to a finishing our our second quarter, our first semester. In the blended model for elementary and of course our virtual for six twelve. We have begun from the work that we have presented tonight and begin to think about second semester. We are of the belief that we ought to enact plans that bring. A our all our students K twelve back in person for the start of second semester on January nineteenth. We say that knowing that as Dr. Watson and Dr. Wallen has said, our mitigation efforts have worked. Again, we've had. Certainly some transmission in schools, but certainly nothing that. We believe is at a high level. So we believe. That the work that Dr. Watson talked about in terms of our principals and our operation of people and many others putting in place have indeed, I think, taken hold. And we are so proud of our staff and our students for their compliance. You've heard me say in other meetings that I believe we can both maintain health and safety. And have quality teaching and learning. And I will repeat that again tonight. I think we can have students return for the second semester. I think there's some details we obviously still need to put in place such as. It does does virtual. Currently our virtual Monday or does virtual education have any part of that? But generally, we believe that students need to be in school. As much as we can get them in school. And that the semester break allows us to make those plans in the next month to get our students back. So before. We move to Mr. Candy. I know Mrs. Topper, you had perhaps some questions before we go to the kind of the communication plan, but. I know board members want to have questions or or you know, comment on the on what you have just heard from. Certainly the reports and in terms of my conclusion about where we are as we plan for the second semester.
Well, I'll just I'll just start off and say I'm I'm glad to hear you make. Those recommendations, I think. Well, first off, thanks to to your team, your Dr. Wallen, Dr. Watson, Dr. Matheson, Dr. Beckner. All good information, all all challenging situations. That that is Dr. Watson referred to, could we do more? Yes. Excuse me, we could always do more. And the question is, how can we do more? So. I think the the question on a lot of people's minds is how can we get more kids back to school? And and it sounds like. You you have. Developed a plan, working on a plan. I I feel confident that amidst the challenges of COVID, it sounds like we we can safely return. I think we are, I think our data has proven and we've said that that students are generally safe at school. As Dr. Wallen indicated, it sounds like maybe that some of the staff transmissions could have been avoided. And so I I hope that would be part of the internal plan would be to continue communicating. Best practices to to staff to make sure we're we're avoiding those situations where we might. We might ultimately encounter additional unnecessary quarantines. I think that, you know, I think all in all, it probably is. School probably is a safe place to be. I think we've we've determined that. It's it's knowing that the community needs to to do their part when they're not in school. Knowing that we may need to close buildings if if one or two buildings get out of hand, we've seen some of our surrounding districts do that. And I think that's, I think that's a viable option. I think for me, I think, you know, and we can certainly talk through some things tonight. You know, if if Mrs. Hopper has some questions, if anybody else has specific questions about how we can do it, I I think. You know, I'd certainly like to see our youngest students be back five days. And I'd I'd love to see our our secondary students be back as many days as possible as well. So. I don't know how that factors into your your timeline, but I think it sounds like second semester, the beginning of second semester makes the most sense. It provides the continuity that we've said we were going to provide. Gives families and staff and faculty time to plan accordingly. And. I'd love to hear some more some more comments or questions from any of the rest of the board.
Mr. Todd, before I I just want to comment that continuity and and consistency. Obviously, Mr. McPartland talked about his survey with teachers. They don't teachers that we're hearing that from parents. And we do really believe that that is an important part moving on our 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 second quarter. As some of our administrators have said is was a bit bumpy. Our first quarter was pretty consistent. We had consistency assurance because everybody was virtual. Our second quarter, and again, I think Pat McPartland said that as well from the teacher's viewpoint, it's been a bit bumpy. We believe that we need to do better second, second semester, start of second semester. So. Well, we we really do. Believe strongly. To your point. Other school districts have had to deal with the. The likelihood of shortage of subs and quarantines and some difficulties. So I I think as as we have to go into the second semester with with our eyes open. That we may face some challenges, but nonetheless, we believe that again, mitigation practices are good and solid. But that we know that we we likely will face some potential challenges unless we have the drop off that we're hoping here with COVID transmission. I'm sorry, I just thought I just wanted to add that before other certainly other board members please weigh in.
Yep.
So if I may, one of my questions was that I just learned this evening that and this. I don't know who to direct this to, perhaps Dr. Wallen, perhaps Dr. Marty. But that the White House slash perhaps the CDC. Made a phone call to the state of Missouri today, saying that we need to do better. Because the COVID numbers within the state are not moving in the right direction. They're getting worse. And there's grave concern from apparently the White House. That we're not doing all we should be doing in the state of Missouri. And there is recommendations as to what can be done, including what schools should be doing. So I I understanding that this information just came out. I was wondering if anybody had the opportunity yet to review that. And if not, if we could review that. I was wondering if anybody had the opportunity yet to review that, and if not, if we could review that. To provide some time as to what those recommendations might be.
I, I guess one of my, one of my thoughts here is I think we're hearing from even some of our local. Experts, Dr. Garza, who continually calls on the state to, you know, do a better job. So I don't think it's, it's just the White House that have been calling on Missouri as a whole to do a better job. I think some of our own leaders and Dr. Wallen, I know if you want to comment. But yes, we should, we could do better in the in the state, obviously. And I don't think, I think we all don't want to get into the political arguments, which unfortunately sometimes center the picture here. But yes, I think, I think there's, there's a lot of agreement that we as a state. And certainly we're all accountable, even in our local area could do better, but Dr. Wallen.
I haven't, I haven't read the letter that you're referring to, but I do know that, you know, we're doing a lot of things here in St. Louis County that are not happening across the state. So I feel fortunate that we have the guidance of our health department and in our school district, you know, having the a mask mandate from the very beginning. Which is working out incredibly well, I think is one of those things that's been proven to make a difference. So I do think we are, at least on the school district level. You know, engaging in those practices that are considered best practice for prevention, but we need, I mean, we need our state and our communities. You know, to step it up to not to lessen the amount of community spread so that it's not, that's not what's, you know, meeting us on our doorstep, so.
I wonder if the White House called a lot of states because, I mean, I think I heard the night that, you know, maybe thirty out of fifty-eight states, you know, the. The trends were not going in the right direction, so I have to guess that wasn't just Missouri that was called potentially.
Yeah, I guess my, my point there was mainly it's to what the suggestions are for schools. And apparently there were some recommendations made and it would be curious to see what those are. My other question had to do with. The, the matter of virtual campus being closed. I can only imagine that we're going to continue to have fluctuations with parents or students wanting to move into the virtual environment. And with it capped where it's at right now, are there opportunities to reassess that, to look and see it there? You know, if we, if we're hearing that more that there's some teachers that do want to stay virtual. And yet there might be some other families that want to move virtual, is there an opportunity to. Offer more virtual campus openings. Ahead of what might move forward into the second semester. Because I feel like we're not offering. Parents and teachers opportunities that they may want if we're capped where we're at right now, and can anything be done about that?
Dr. Beckner, Dr. Bogus, if you're on, I know we've had some discussion, like the comment.
In short, we could, but not with consequences that would be even less palatable than being full. For example, we know how important and we know how important the teachers are to families and kids. And so if we began to move people around, as Dr. Watson alluded to earlier. Families who didn't want to change their setting might have to change their teacher. And those are the kinds of things that we have to weigh all the different factors. So for example, if there were, you know. If there was a teacher who had twenty students in his or her class and then we opened more virtual sections and had to move. That teacher to teach virtually to open more opportunities for people to take virtual campus. Any student in that teacher's class who didn't want to go virtual would have to change to a different in-person teacher. So those are some of the barriers that we run into, and I think from a community perspective. Saying to a large number of our families, we know that you've been really committed to this teacher, you've been working with them for months and months. We know how important that relationship is, but we needed to open more virtual seats, that's a trade off we're not really willing to make at this point. And that's just at the elementary level, when we get into the secondary level, it has a cascading effect. Because as soon as you change one teacher's class. That ends up having to cause multiple scheduled changes for multiple students. So while we want, we are currently working to lower our class sizes in virtual campus for second semester. At the high school level, that will open more sections for students. We're not wholesale trying to create large openings because of the negative impact that would have, including. And one of the challenges we had this quarter was our teachers didn't find out what classes they were teaching until almost right before the quarter started. But we want our teachers to be really fully prepared, and if we begin making those changes at this point. They will not know what they're teaching ahead of time, which is going to ultimately impact students. So there are a lot, our, I've used this term multiple times with our teams, there in this situation, there are no wins, there are only trades. And the question becomes if we wanted to create that opportunity, what are we trading? And often the trade offs are significant to the point that we say, no, we're gonna, we're just gonna have to stay where we are.
I just think so, because I know we have a lot of families maybe tuning in tonight and and again. This might be a just point to reinforce what Parkway chose to do in the summer. Is so much different than other districts, now I'm not, I'm not criticizing other districts, but and and I, the reason why Dr. Beckner covered the virtual. Survey is because we, when we assign students to the virtual campus. We wanted to make sure that we had a quality program. And so, you know, and Parkway made a decision to distinguish between virtual. And the in-person and have those various stages of Dr. Watson spoke about. In some districts around us and around the state. It's a lot easier if a student wants to go virtual, fine. But here's, here's the challenge, and I can tell you, you know, talking to other superintendents and and again, Pat McParland made reference to that. Other districts are facing some challenges because their teachers are going to go into the second semester. And they've been working hard, teaching both in-person and virtual. And there's some feeling in those districts, and again, I don't want to be sound critical or cynical here. But sometimes it's very difficult for a teacher to get full concentration to the in-person and the virtual. You're asking a teacher every day to to teach a two different audiences. So while we have some parents who want to go virtual. But because of the decision we made, we've created some barriers to that. But in creating those barriers, we've also dedicated and made sure our teachers were teaching specifically to an audience. Now, we got away from that a little bit in the blended, obviously, because of our change to the blended. And that's, and we got a lot of feedback, not only from teachers, but from parents and students about this isn't good. And so I think it's important for for everyone to understand our decision is is quite different, right? Dr. Beckner, I mean, I think we are one of few districts that have made that decision, right or wrong, we made it in the summer. But it's different and and now as we get to this, this time of thinking about second semester. It's hard for us to to uproot, as Dr. Beckner said. The in-person teacher, the in-person teachers who have developed a relationship for the, for the benefit of some people that would like to go virtual.
If we're still opening it up to questions. As we sit here today, it's December ninth. The last time, you know, there was a decision before us for the benefit of our families, our teachers, our community, we set. What we're going to be doing through the end of the semester, which was reasonable and, you know, based on the numbers and everything else. You know, tonight, we've heard lots of, some lots of encouraging news, and I think we're all obviously looking ahead to the second semester. And I think the board in managing expectations for everyone would like to have something in place for second semester that families can rely on as far as planning their children's education in their own lives. Is it unreasonable to say that we should set some sort of. Or expectation that there is a recommendation to us, maybe the week before winter break as far as second semester goes and then. Challenge administration, everyone else to put something together so that at that point we can decide what. At a minimum, the third quarter looks like and hopefully the whole second semester, is that reasonable as far as. I guess I'll start with Dr. Marty and everyone else, where you all sit here tonight?
No, I'll just, I'll just add on that, I think, I think to be fair to our community, I mean, I think, I think. Getting together to approve something like that is is probably a good idea before the break versus after the break. To give families and our staff the, the time and opportunity to make plans. But I would, I would say, I mean, if if we're going to do that, I think it would be. Very beneficial to to have, today's Wednesday, I think, I think by next Wednesday. I think within a week, we need to have something that we can communicate to our families and say, look, this is what we've, what we've come up with, this is our plan and obviously. You know, we'll be, we'll make ourselves available to, to, to bounce stuff off of, I mean, if you, if you've got. You know, an A or a B and which, which do you want to see on the official plan? You know, we'll, we'll make ourselves available over the next week, but I think, I think by next Wednesday, we need to have something to our community and and say. You know, this is, this is what we are going to go to the board with and and, you know, if we, if we like it, well, we should like it, I mean, because we, I mean, we work. We work, you know, as much as we can to to give you the feedback that you ask for, and I think that. You know, I think if you can come up with something, you know, based on what we've talked about tonight and get that out by this time next week. I think that'll give the community and everyone a chance to, to weigh in and and give us the A or N.
I think we can do that, and I don't know, maybe is this a time for Mr. Candy to kind of maybe lay out some of the communication plans?
Yeah, if he, I mean, if he's got his regular timeline, then.
Yes, Nikki, pull up that slide. I think it's probably a good segue and and it's exactly what we anticipated. Just to help you think through, you know, when and how to make the decision for second semester, because I've, on this timeline, I have two little stars. One is the star and that is tonight, and that's December ninth board, and then I have the next star is is January thirteenth. And that's your next regularly scheduled board meeting. So as we've discussed, you know, a big part of the feedback we've heard from both teacher, staff and parents is. Please provide us as much lead time as we can, as you can for planning purposes, for obvious reasons. And and continuity. And so, you know, with with the third or with the second semester starting on January nineteenth. If your next board meeting is not till the thirteenth, that doesn't give you much time unless you want to make a decision that essentially either. Either A does not give people much lead time, or if it gives them a lead time, it pushes your decision back into sort of, you know, implementation of early February. So. So you've got a window if you want to try to, you know, make a decision sooner rather than later, which is what it sounds like. We do have the thought exchanges that are going on right now, the timing is good because we've literally have thousands of parents and students and staff and teachers. Giving us feedback right now, and we will have that, as you can see, within a week or so or the few days of having that compiled. So give you some more data to help inform your decisions. I know we have Hanukkah going on now, we could perhaps, I don't miss over, we've looked at the perhaps that twenty-first, twenty-second timeframe before we get out of here before the winter break. You could establish us another board special meeting if you wanted to, to make a decision before the break. Because you can see we head into the winter break on the twenty-third through January fourth. So if you wanted to do that before, you'd have to do that around that timeframe.
I would, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to interfere with Hanukkah by the same token, I don't. I don't know, our last day is the twenty-second and and I really wouldn't want to do it on the twenty-second. Is the twenty-first. Twenty-first an option, it's a Monday night. Nobody likes a meeting on a Monday night, but.
Well, Mr. Todd, to your request, I think we can have something to start sharing with the board and potentially the public a week from now. And certainly then the board meeting is really whenever we can gather people, so I believe our team is is would be available, can be available. Should be available on the twenty-first if that would be the choice.
Mr. Tandy, that the feedback that you list there from the thought exchange surveys that. I assume there's different dates that that the surveys end for the different groups, what are the groups that end the as late as the eighteenth?
So the last surveys that. Complete that finish are the parent surveys. So the students and the staff surveys will finish first.
But they're open now.
We could make sure that we get that feedback. I mean, we'll just, we'll just double the efforts and get it, get it compiled very as quickly as possible, we have several people working on that, so.
But they're, but they're open now, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to, you know, be totally set on a recommendation without the surveys being completed.
And as I mentioned this morning in a meeting we had, we've, we've had really, as we normally do, our community, they, they are. Very good about providing their feedback and and good participation, I will say on the parent surveys, we have over three thousand parents. Already who have participated and student, the student surveys have been phenomenal in terms of the number of students participating, it's been really, really good. So we'll get that turned around really quickly for you, if you want to look at the twenty-first, we can give you feedback before that.
Okay, that would be good. Yeah, if we could have that, if we're going to settle on the twenty-first, if we could have that feedback by that Friday before, I guess that is the eighteenth, isn't it?
Yes, and and to Dr. Marty's point, you know, if if you're looking at a Monday night. I mean, hopefully we could have a proposal and some ideas back to you that the ending of that week right there that. And and so that would give also the public a few days to see what we're thinking and. And have them an opportunity to look at it before it comes to you on on that Monday.
Anyone, any of the board members have any issue with Monday?
No.
You shouldn't have a whole lot of social plans, so.
Yeah, I got, I have Blues tickets that night.
I will say it would be wonderful, we've talked about this, if, you know, if there was any way to be able to provide everyone an opportunity to know sooner rather than later. I know that's part of your hope as well, so everyone can plan and it ever, it impacts everybody. So the more lead time that we can provide, the better.
And I'll just say, you know, it, we've said it before, I've said it before, Dr. Marty said it before, but obviously we need. Community help more than ever before to to keep these numbers headed in the right direction. We think they're headed in the right direction, we think, you know, Dr. Wallen indicated that we may be plateauing and that. That should mean that we're going to keep, you know, we're going to trickle back down and and I hope that's the case, but. Gosh, these next, these next few weeks will be critical to to make this plan work, so. I just encourage everyone to, to have a somewhat of a socially distant month of December and. And I'd love to see us all get back to normal, some degree of normal in January.
So one just thought maybe it could be considered as part of the plan is, you know, I think for. Thinking of our teachers who have been all virtual and shifting back to going to school every day, that's a huge transition. And there is a lot of emotional response to that, it's very, very real for people. So just thinking about what strategies could we have in place to support our staff through that transition and just. It's just, it's going to be hard, it's just going to be hard, even when that's what people want to do. It's just not going to be easy, so I'm just thinking about any strategies we could put into place for supporting our staff. Through this process. As part of our plan.
I know that in a meeting today, we had a, we met with our teacher leaders and and I, and again. Pat McParland echoed the, you know, we need to continually be aware of that and the health and safety, certainly we will be. But Dr. Bogus at that meeting said, you know, he continually is willing to meet with staff, that we have to, if there's some new issues that staff members have. Teachers and other staff members will will do our best working with them, so. You know, our Leah Gonzalez, our wellness coordinator, Dr. Wallen, continue to try to provide health in terms of programming there too, so. I agree with you, Chrissy, you know, our staff, who we've kind of, you know, been bragging on tonight. At the same time, they need a lot of support and they're our lifeblood in all this, we couldn't do it without them, so we have absolutely have to. Be attentive to that transition for. we have, absolutely have to be attentive to that transition for for some of them, and and continually uh address um their needs, um, which I think we've been good about, because I, Dr. Bogus again, and and Kim Cohen have been doing that since summer, in terms of making sure that uh staff that really had some identified medical needs were definitely into the virtual campus, and but we know there's ongoing issues that staff may have, that we need to address.
In the timeline, uh, when will teachers be informed of the plan? You know, we talked about informing parents ahead of time, that how are we gonna inform teachers ahead of time?
Well, I think they're probably listening tonight, and already are aware of maybe the direction here, but yes, absolutely, uh, they would be, uh, we would be working with them. Um, I believe next week, uh, Dr. Beckner and Dr. Bogus have been working on the, the high school teachers get their assignments. Uh, so I mean, they'll be, that's a big thing for second semester for the staff, the high school teachers, because in the, in the reassignment here, there's some changes of what teachers may be teaching. And so the sooner the better, just like uh Paul talked about, uh, that the sooner we can notify parents, but staff needs to be notified um as soon as possible as well, about their uh second semester assignment, and what uh it's gonna look like in terms of operations.
Thank you. Do you think it's, you think it's realistic to have uh K through twelve all back five days a week?
Well, I think it's, I think it's realistic, uh, uh, if you were asking me, where's our priority, I would say it's K five. Um, but I also think, again, for consistency purposes, and uh certainly, you know, our our parents have weighed in um at all levels, I think they would like to see a comprehensive plan for the semester. So, you know, the desire, I think, to have our, 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 all our students in on the nineteenth is where we'd like to go. If we cannot, I would say, um, we definitely set the priority for K five, and uh, and if some, if there's some, something happening that we, uh, for safety reasons, health reasons, we we maybe postpone um the 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 nineteenth for a while, but not for a whole quarter, I think we, we operate um on the assumption, we want to get our um six, twelve students in in person as soon as we can, safely and in a health way, healthy way, but right now, I think our plan should be the nineteenth.
Okay.
I have two comments, um, I guess, one is, as mentioned today in the public comments, two is, we've never really discussed the four-day approach that other schools have taken. Could you kind of briefly describe what the four-day approach might look like as an option on the table? And then two, we keep saying semester, I want to clarify too, we are still gonna be on the quarter system for the second semester.
Correct.
Clear.
Right, uh, yes, we're gonna be in a quarter system, um, primarily, um, you know, six, twelve, obviously, um, in terms of, of course, of courses and and how that'll be designed. Um, but as far as uh, in essence, I think, um, in talking to some other superintendents, you know, who have really, some since the beginning of the year, who have, you know, committed to being in, um, I think one of the things that they have said is, uh, they've made that commitment, and uh they've had to deal with the issues that have come their way. Um, I I would, I think our team, my team right now believes that we ought to be thinking about the whole semester, and of course, as we've mentioned, deal with, you know, challenges that may come our way. Um, but I think we ought to be clear for the benefit of parent planning and all the issues that our students have that we think about the whole semester. Matt, as far as the five, you know, the four-day in, um, I'll let uh maybe Kevin or Chelsea just respond, uh, you know, we've used the virtual Monday, it's served, it serves some purposes of which they may want to just talk about. Um, some school districts are doing that, some middle weeks, some Fridays, some Mondays. Right now, we've had the the virtual Monday, so Dr. Watson, Dr. Becker, do you want to just maybe comment on some thinking of potentially continue that for a while, or what our, what our work has been around the virtual, the virtual day?
Well, it, as Dr. Marty said, and and we all know, we have the Monday Distance Learning Day, and as we think about if we're gonna bring, you know, all kids back, it would be advantageous for us to have a day for our custodial team to really be able to deep clean. Um, and that Monday could be utilized for that, that's something that we talked about even this summer, when we had our teacher teams, um, you know, by level helping design, you know, what, going back to school, what looked like, we did debate what day, and 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 that just uh could simply, you know, be a conversation if we needed to be, otherwise, it could be a Monday. Um, also, um, you know, if you remember in the spring, we had a day that teachers were engaged in development. And so that really did benefit us and set us up for some of the success that we've had thus far. So I don't know, off the top of my mind, it, I think there are a couple of districts, Kevin, you probably will know, that are doing the development time, or maybe it's a half, a half day, one day a week, Kevin, do you?
Yeah, many districts have built in, even if it's not a half day, like, um, you know, early release, or sometime in the school day to promote development for for teachers, because we know so much of what we're doing this year is just different and more challenging. And I think the other thing we've talked about with maintaining potentially a virtual day, and uh certainly not my area, but want to make sure it gets mentioned, is with students back, there will be more quarantines. With more quarantines comes more contact tracing. With more contact tracing comes a lot more time commitment from our nursing staff, our administrative staff, every school that has, you know, people involved in contact tracing, so even just having that extra day of the week actually makes a a really big difference, I think, for for many of our staff.
And we've heard from Dr. Wallen and our administrators that uh the weekends um are times when people are, you know, exposed, and um our administrators and nurses need to do that work typically a lot on Mondays.
And we've heard that from our neighboring districts, that that's, that's when they tend to see an uptick. And so the, over the weekend and into Monday is when they really hit, hit the time-consuming part of trying to do that contact tracing, and that's a burden.
And I'm bringing up the idea that there are going to be quarantines when we're back in school, and they may be increased. I think that both parents and teachers will really be looking for clarity on what learning looks like for the children who are in quarantine, um, so that we're not think teachers too much in the position of splitting their attention, because we have heard, of course, that that lowers the quality of the teaching. And so I think that really specific plans around what quarantines, what the absences will look like, um, I think it's going to give a lot of peace of mind to both teachers and to parents. Um, because one thing I have heard from parents is that the splitting of, and from teachers, the splitting of attention between Zoom and in-person kids is so rough on everybody. Yeah. And that's still going to exist depending on how how um absences are dealt with when it comes to quarantines. It's because of those quarantines that we're gonna be able to stay in school, because that's what keeps our numbers down.
Yeah, no doubt, of the three options, we have the all-in-person, all-virtual, and split between two settings. There is no question that split between two settings is the most challenging of all of the options. But having talked to many of our counterparts, we know that um as those quarantines increase, if those students don't have some sort of connection back to the classroom and access to that live instruction, they just fall so much further behind, uh, we know that some students, hey, you know, I, one of my team members, um, one of her children is on her third quarantine um in their, in the district where they live, which means a large portion of the learning for this term, she just hasn't been able to access. And so it's a really, um, it's a really tough spot to be in, where we know that of the delivery options we have in front of us, that's the most challenging. It's unfortunately also one that I believe we're gonna be stuck with, um, for at least the remainder of this school year. And so a lot of our work is focused around, well, how do we make that um the best possible? It it will never be a great experience, but how do we make it the best possible experience we can?
And to Mr. Todd's point, and that's why we so desperately need the cooperation of our community. Um, I could tell you, uh, in a meeting recently, uh, uh, superintendents who have been all year, uh, one of them from St. Charles County said he's got students that have been, have spent half their their first semester in quarantine. Um, like, uh, Dr. Becker just said, it was, you know, one period, then another period. Uh, so they never were tested positive, but the students were quarantined. And I think our public needs to know, that's not our decision, this is, uh, we're, we're, we don't determine quarantine, that's a a directive um from from the county uh in their, in their parameters, so, um, and Dr. Wallen, they do contact tracing, and again, I think our 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 public needs have really appreciate the fact that contact tracing, you know, we've got um several people in each building trained, uh, five hours of training to John, John Hopkins University, so that they've become good at this, but it takes a lot of time. So, um, Mrs. Hill, to your point, um, uh, yes, I mean, the reality is that um coming back is gonna create some challenges for us. Uh, but again, uh, we've been doing some contact racing, we've certainly been doing quarantine. Uh, the the biggest challenge will be the the instructional, the the engagement, which you just mentioned, we need to think deeply about.
And and I will say, from a communication standpoint, we have to really um front-load this, because if this is where we're gonna go, then we have to help everybody understand that, yes, quarantines are part of it, that's a mitigation measure, and those are the things that are required to help prevent, you know, the spread, and it's part of what we all have to do. And if we want continuity, and that's the thing we've heard from from everyone, is that we, we really want to have continuity of learning, if we're gonna stick to the stick to that learning model, then we need to understand quarantines are gonna be just part of it. It's it's part of what we live with, and we have to figure out how to work with within that. And there might be occasionally when a school here or there might need to close down temporarily, uh, but the whole district wouldn't have to, so we just need to understand that's, if that's where we're gonna go, that's gonna be the new, the new, you know, model, move, moving into the second semester. But for those families who have chosen in-person, we know that that's the best place probably for their families to be, and so that's what we're, that's our goal.
So any other questions for Dr. Marty or Seth?
I guess my, one last question about um curriculum would be with considering how we're gonna be moving forward, there was some discussion and comments about length of uh the classroom, number of classes are gonna be taught, what what's kind of the the thought at this point as to what a recommendation might be at the high school level for um number of classes that a student would be taking in the third quarter and the length of those classes?
So it will be four classes during third quarter, three classes during fourth quarter, and um by the, I believe, um, in working with the high school principals, we said by the fifteenth, we want to finalize the schedule so that before winter break, families can know um both an in-person schedule and um a schedule if we have to be in a virtual setting, so that there would be no surprises, we would have all of that laid out ahead of time. So I imagine, um, as you all, as the board are having this conversation and making a decision, we'll be in a position to also say, here's exactly what that time would be. Um, we know certainly when we're in person, then that means that bus schedules become a reality again, and the length of the day is sort of determined for us um by, um, you know, the, just the needs of transportation and making that work. Yeah, but we've also heard how important it is um to have built-in time to support kids during the school day. So we'll really be trying to keep something fairly consistent in terms of number of minutes of each class, that would also build in learning support during the school day for students.
Okay.
Don't, I don't, I heard just silence here, but I mean, we, we will move forward with uh planning to get uh basically our plan to you next week, and then we'll look to plan a meeting for the, hopefully, the twenty-first.
That's, sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, and I I just wanna, I just want to say uh to my team again, thank them for all their work and and really, uh, uh, Dr. Watson kind of themed the, you know, the current reality. Um, I hope, again, um, since I know we had a number of people watching tonight, I hope you got a sense that we were trying to be as objective and fair about that. I mean, there's some, there's some good news in that, and there's not some, not so good a news, but uh, we're trying to assess that as clearly as we can, as we think about um uh kind of shifting gears uh for the second semester, it's a transition time. Um, the semester allows that, and uh, and we're um, we're, we're in a sense of, um, you know, kind of changing uh our direction here, but we believe it's the, it's the right, the right direction.
Yeah, and thank you all very much for your work toward that end, and uh we'll continue, uh, we'll continue the dialogue until we get something finalized. Uh, next up, we have a work session, and I will turn it over to Brian Whittle, Director of Finance, and Patty Bedborough, our CFO, to discuss preliminary budget assumptions.
Good evening, once again, President Todd, Vice President Hopper, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Marty. Um, tonight, um, we are going to present to you our preliminary budget assumptions, so over the past several months, Brian Whittle, our Director of Finance, and I have been working on our financial projections. Last month, we brought the revised twenty-twenty-one budget to the board for your consideration and approval. And while we know we're in an economic downturn, the results of the revenue do seem to be improved from our projections that we did earlier in the spring. The major sources of revenue for the district include both property taxes and sales tax revenues in the form of Prop C, and this, which is the statewide sales tax, and last year, we had the best collection rate in several years. Of course, this was due not only to the State Tax Commission focusing on some assessment issues in Jackson County, but also with the partial closure of the State Tax Commission due to the pandemic generally. This year, we're planning to begin meeting in, they are beginning, they are planning to begin uh meeting in the spring, they did not have meetings this fall, and for sales tax, we anticipated a large decrease in spending with the closure of many department stores and restaurants during the stay-at-home mandate. While the sales tax for last year was lower than budgeted, it was about the same as the prior year spending, so we assume that our purchasing of things such as our toilet paper and disinfectants certainly had kept at least the sales tax portion of the economy going. There are two main components that have changed, and we will go into them in greater detail later in this presentation. So, um, our, our focus is always is on our mission and our vision, and then our strategic goals um with uh the budget planning and stuff too, so our first step in uh budget development is certainly to review our goals for the current and upcoming years. We want our budget to align with our strategic goals set by Project Parkway. One of the goals in Project Parkway is the efficient and effective allocation of resources, so goal three, and we developed this um and it includes developing a surplus budget that has a point-two-five fund percent, fund balance growth each year. We will walk you through this process this evening, and um as we're sharing our assumptions, next page, please. So first, I wanted to go through our timeline, so of course, we are uh presenting this timeline to you this evening. Um, budget preparation is an ongoing process, it is not a once and done. It involves over time, as we know more, and it begins, of course, with setting of our goals. As mentioned, over the past several weeks, Mr. Whittle and I have been reviewing and estimating the revenues, not only for this year, but the upcoming years as well. We have looked back at the last recession and pointed out our similarities and some of our differences to this current economic downturn. In January, we will present these budget assumptions to you for your approval. Following this, we will provide the opportunity for the schools and the program managers to begin building their budgets for next year. The schools are provided a per pupil allocation, but should build their budget based on the zero-based budget concept. The departments should all begin with zero as well, and build their budgets to meet the goals they have set for next year. Their budgets are due the end of February, and at this time, Their budgets are due the end of February. And at this time, when we review the, the budgets, we ask questions and make adjustments we're needing. During this time, we also have negotiations with three employee groups. So PNA, which is our nursing group, CWA, which is our custodial and warehouse workers, and our new group, which is PUMA, which is our maintenance and grounds staff. We will also have necessary analysis for our salary increases finalized for the rest of our staff and our ongoing review of our revenue sources. We plan to present the budget to the board at the May 19th board meeting and then present the final budget book to the Board of Education at the June 16th meeting. Next slide, please. So what are some of our challenges ahead? These next few years will be different for sure. They may be difficult or we may recover from this economic situation quicker, quickly. Let's begin with our commercial real estate market. Many employers have their employees working from home. When they return to the office, they may need more space for social distancing perhaps. Or will they need reduced space because they have successfully been able to work remotely? We will discuss how we have left the commercial properties flat for the upcoming year, even though it's a reassessment year. We will also be challenged by the possible amount of rental space available. Will landlords claim the income ratio and ask for reductions in their assessed valuations? We will not know some of that information until after their assessments have been assessed and they begin their, their protest claims. We currently have a booming residential market with record low interest rates. We are in search of their, you know, we have many that are in search of their forever home and willing to pay over even the asking price for the homes. We have increased needs to support students in both the classroom and remote learning. Will we be having a virtual campus after the threat of the pandemic is over? We will also have an increased cost for the refresh of our Chromebooks. We delayed some of that cost for this current year. And on top of that, we have the suggestions of staffing increases from the Mental Health Task Force to consider and the recommendation, which includes a recommendation of adding core coordinators to assist our students. This on top of the increase in salaries and benefits in order to attract and retain highly talented and qualified employees in all positions, increase the cost of supplies, services, and ongoing PPE needs certainly will be part of our challenges that we meet in this upcoming year as well. Next slide, please. This, I felt, was a bit of good news to share. This image was from the November 27th edition of the St. Louis Business Journal. So this is comforting analysis showing that 51% of the companies that had responded are actually expecting an increase in employment in the next 12 months. And only 4% intend to have a decrease in employment. So certainly that seems to be a bit of hope on the horizon. Next slide, please.
Good evening again. This is kind of a breakdown by percentage of our total revenues. As with previous years, the bulk of our revenue comes from local sources, over 90%. The state funding formula and transportation make up less than 5% of our. On this, the next slide, we can see our operating revenues break out. So, you know, you have 90% of our revenues are local. What is the local? Property taxes make up 82.44% of that. As the single largest revenue source, we will go into further details on property taxes in the upcoming slide. Prop C or the 1% Missouri sales tax makes up a little over 7% of our operating budget. Other large contributors include tuition from VSP, food service, M&amp;M search charge, and financial and tuition tax and student activities. So as I mentioned, on the next slide, our biggest component of our revenue, as always, is property taxes. It has, you know, five main components. As, as a review, we want to discuss these major components that make up and impact our local tax. Collection rate is a percentage of revenue that is received versus what is left. We have used an estimate of 96.2% for this upcoming year and in the future. This is based not only on historical averages, but also with the possible delayed payment and settlement of previously protested. We know that the state tax commission has been delayed with COVID, as Patty mentioned. And we know with certain, with relative certainty that some of these will be settled this year and cause our collection rate to be in the 96% range compared to this previous year, as Patty mentioned, which was close to an all-time high. The Consumer Price Index or CPI is extremely important in our calculation as well. The CPI limits the growth of our revenue. This plays a crucial role, especially in a reassessment year as our upcoming year is. Currently, we are tracking a 1.2 CPI percentage, but you know, final determination will be made in a few months. New, new construction is important as well because that will represent the new revenue that can be added. Recruitment is the mechanism we can use to capture the lost revenues from the payback of the difference in protest, the tax settlement and the original. On the next slide, we'll go into the collection rate. You know, as mentioned, we're using the 96.2 as our collection rate over the next few years in our forecast. As you can see from our history, this does seem to be a conservative estimate as in, you know, many years are over that 96.2%. But, you know, there's years below as well. What we do not know is how the pandemic will be impacting the collection rate, both this year and in future years. While last year, the impact was favorable, as Patty mentioned, because the pandemic delayed the hearings of the State Tax Commission. We know the commission is scheduled to meet in the upcoming months and begin settling some of the prior year cases and current cases. In addition, we may experience a negative impact with slower payment based on a lease payment lag or delay in personal property tax. You know, this is part of the unknown that Patty referred to is we don't know how many people will be able to pay their property or personal property. In the next slide, we go into the next calculation, which is CPI. You can tell it's trended down, but we are currently tracking the CPI 1.2%. We've built our estimates. We kept the commercial property flat and the growth of 1.2 for our residential property. What we do know is that we have a very strong residential market. This is driven by record low interest rates and a low inventory. And as Patty mentioned, for commercial property, following a discussion with the deputy assessor, our industrial property is doing well, but the jury is still out on retail and office. And the next slide is our new construction. With the pandemic, this is, this is the number, maybe the most challenging to predict. You know, we've, Patty discussed this a lot. I think we changed it five, six times in the past two months. In our area, we do see ongoing construction, construction. There's, in Chesterfield, we have construction and ongoing project in Maryland Heights. We looked at this more as an average of our past years with a slight reduction. So you can tell it's higher than, you know, back in the prior recession, but it's also lower than our most. Okay. And then the, you know, the last big component is the assessed valuation. As you can see, we, as we put in the new construction and the increase from our Consumer Price Index, we do have a slight growth in our assessed valuation. This could change as we recover from the pandemic. What we do know is that our residential market and our industrial market is strong. And as Patty mentioned, we do not have information on the retail and our office space. We can speculate that most of these are under a term lease and the impact of vacancy may not be realized until future years with protests. We're hopeful that the strong residential market, industrial market will remain. This could at least help stabilize any reduction from the retail and office space. And then I'll let Patty take over our, what the total revenue, operating revenues look like.
As you are aware, our property tax revenue is the largest source of operating revenue for the district. You'll notice a decrease from our prior year or the current year into FY22. And this is mostly due to the recruitment that we levied into the operating fund for FY21. That provided us greater flexibility. Normally, we levy the recruitment into our capital projects fund. Provides us the flexibility that if we need the money, it is there in our operating fund. And if it's